Counselwoman Frank.
Second motion.
Our motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. First item on the agenda is an executive session. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Madera.
I move to enter executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses four, parentheses E, for the purpose of determining a position relative to the matter that may be subject to negotiations concerning incentives for a potential economic development project within the city.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
I'll second that.
Our motion is second to go into that executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Alright, so it looks like it is seven ayes, one nay. We will be in executive session. The approximate time is 10 to 15 minutes. So it shouldn't take very long, and we'll be right back out to get back into the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Now I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the staff would please pass the microphone around and ask the audience to introduce themselves.
Chris McGowan, Colorado Petroleum Council.
Thank you.
Jeremy Jenkins, Police Department.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
John Melly.
Joe Wilson, Public Works.
Yermos Erne.
Jessica Abel, Green Faith, Colorado.
Lisa Goodmanson.
Megan Harry.
Carolyn Keith, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Kathy Blighman, Human Resources.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Susan Noble.
Keke Kettler.
Jim Kettler, Buffalo Mesa Run.
Eric Goodmanson.
Mike Ackerman, Reunion.
Julia Klein.
Seestrom.
Philip Zarenka, Extraction Oil.
Sean Gasberg, S.
Kelly Cox, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Patty Vara, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Eric Jacobson, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Spencer Crouch, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Brian Kane, Extraction Oil and Gas.
Heidi Henkel, Broomfield Moms Active Community.
Lori Anderson.
Trees Gilbert, Welder and Water.
I'm Greg Hahn, Prairie View High School.
Lauren Swain.
Lisa Culpepper, Adams County Treasurer-Elect.
Laura Bauer, City Clerk.
Alright, thank you all for being here. Started with the first item on our agenda today is proclamation. Proclamation, Jamie White Day. I'd like to invite Councilmember Douglas to introduce the proclamation.
Yes, I'd like to present this proclamation to Jamie White. She's been a very passionate educator, and she's also a huge advocate in the Staple and 27J community. Proclamation declaring November 30th, 2018 as Jamie White Day in Commerce City.
Alright, I have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of proclamation for Jamie White Day. Will the city attorney please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor Fordwell. And there is a discrepancy in the date, so just with what was read, so everybody knows. Whereas Prairie View High School is recognized as a change agent within school District 27J, embracing a culture of high expectations and a goal of evidence and experiential-based learning environments. And whereas, under the president, under the leadership of Principal Jamie White, the school has seen a 76% year-over-year reduction in tardy attendance. Teachers have regained invaluable instruction time by eliminating the use of mobile devices within the classroom, and there has been a 298% year-over-year increase of students taking advantage of concurrent enrollment certificate programs. And whereas, the successes of Prairie View High School are not just a testament to the school's leadership, but the engagement of students, teachers, and community leaders committed to a common goal. And whereas President John F. Kennedy once said that "leadership and learning are indispensable to each other", now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares December 14, 2018 as Jamie White Day, recognizing her contributions to a quality community for a lifetime.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the 27J representative to come forward. I do have a motion and a second. The proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Sir, go ahead, you introduce yourself.
My name is Greg Hahn. I'm the Dean of Students at Prairie View High School. I guess I'm just an honor to be here this evening. Grateful to accept this on behalf of Principal White. I do know that we are planning an assembly that we would like to invite all of you to attend, where we are going to allow, or let Principal White know about this recognition. That assembly is December 14th. It takes place at 2:45. If you would like to attend, we'd invite you to be there at 2:30. It will be a packed house.
Great. Thank you for the invite. I'll bring this down. We can all take a picture with Jamie at the assembly, but I'll give this to you to take tonight. Alright, next we come to citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you're here to speak on an ordinance or resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until the time is called. Presentations will have, will not have a separate public comment period. The City Council is not able to hear comments on land use matters that are before or may come before City Council. Please reserve those comments for the appropriate public hearing. And because we do have a presentation tonight with extraction, I know several people are here to speak, and this is the time to do that for presentation. So I'll go down the list. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. State your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. Start with Mike Ackerman.
Mike Ackerman, 15798 East 108th Avenue, Commerce City. Mr. Mayor, council members, I have an observation to make first. There were three major paving projects done in the past year. One was Highway 2 from 120th to 72nd. The other was Tower Road from 104th to about Penney Boulevard. And the third was Chambers Road from 120th to 104th. Now, the combined miles on Chambers Road and, rather, on Highway 2 and Tower Road is 14 miles combined. Four lanes, that's about 56 lane miles. The part I'm questioning, that I have a question about, is on Chambers Road. About a mile and a half stretch from 120th to about 112th Avenue. That's about a mile and a half with about six lane miles of traffic. There's some four lanes, some two lanes, some three lanes. My question is, why, when I drive Highway 2 or Tower Road... My question is, why, when I drive Highway 2 or Tower Road, I see absolutely zero patches on the road? I drive that approximately a mile-and-a-half on Chambers Road, and there are over 60 patches on that road. Now, notwithstanding the part where they're doing the new utilities, the rest of it is horrible. It's like built-in speed bumps on the whole road. So my question would be is, were there different standards for the quality of work done for Chambers Road than there was for Highway 2 and for Tower Road? And if there was, why? And secondly is, do we have to accept the work that was done on Chambers the way it is?
Well, that one, I think we need our staff to comment on. Someone from Public Works here, Troy, or yourself, or Roger, want to make a comment on Chambers?
I don't believe there are any different pavement standards on the roads as described, but it would be best if we could get Mr. Ackerman's information and have Public Works follow-up with him.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Vicki Kettler.
Hi, I'm Vicki Kettler, 15722 East 107th Avenue, Commerce City. Commerce City, Colorado, Extraction Colony. Warning, may be hazardous to your health to live here. We never would have purchased our retirement home here in Commerce City last year if this would have been truthfully disclosed during our land and title search documents. The absolute rogue behavior by oil and gas companies, both in-state and out-of-state, needs serious attention. This is excess stockpiling in oil production, problems of transporting, storage, refineries, increased emissions, water use, and contamination. Making our family neighborhoods, schools, wildlife areas extremely vulnerable to, is a terrible cost. It should not be about the money, jobs, and economy. We are asking the Commerce City council members to please invest and insist in solutions, stronger regulations, and frequent inspections to ensure that this rapid and out-of-control drilling will not turn our city into an extraction colony. We are talking about protecting lives, health, homeowners' rights, and trying to ensure a sustainable future for our children and our grandchildren. We speak for their right to live in a healthy and safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Goodmanson.
Eric Goodmanson, 11030 River Oaks Lane, and I guess Kaylee Goodmanson, 11030 River Oaks Lane, Henderson, Colorado. Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the reason I'm concerned about extraction and the other oil drilling companies in this area, her safety. Her school is going to be less than a mile from over 24 drill sites. Recently, we had a diesel fire up in Weld County. They evacuated a mile square area around that fire. How are they going to plan on evacuating all the homes in our communities, River Oaks, River Run, Turnberry? All those communities are within less than a mile of 24 wellheads that are planned. And how are they going to evacuate all these children? Is there any plan? Does the city have any involvement with extraction, putting together a plan for evacuation when things do go wrong? Because Colorado-wide, these drill sites and these well sites have had fires and explosions. But luckily, they haven't been right in the middle of neighborhoods. These are homes within 500 feet or less of major wellheads. What's the plan? Does anybody have a plan? Our local fire department is not a municipal fire department. 6B provided additional funding for our fire departments. They wouldn't have to close the firehouse right near my home. If people wouldn't have voted to keep that 6B amendment open, we wouldn't have had a fire department in our area. I'm just concerned about her safety and all the safety of all those children and all those schools that are going to be surrounded by drilling and wellheads. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Noble.
Mayor and council members, Susan Noble, 10642 Olathe Street. I am a shareholder in Extraction Oil and Gas, known as EXOG. I wish to express my concern tonight about Extraction's financial stability and ability to fulfill its commitments regarding rules, regulations, agreements, insurance, and bonding. Last week, while taking 132nd from the county building to Prairie Center Shopping Center, I rounded the corner from Sable and saw black smoke pouring into the sky. I instantly knew that it was PC North, an extraction oil and gas drilling site in unincorporated Adams County. I stopped and took three photos because it seemed impossible that these kinds of emissions are allowed. As you recall, at the oil and gas study session, we presented video of invisible emissions at the same site taken by the organization Earthworks with its infrared camera. When I got back in my car, I had a splitting headache and my sinuses were having a bizarre reaction. An hour later, as I drove home, the smoke was still pouring out. This time, I videotaped it. The huge tank showed a red-hot rim. It was dark by then. Something was definitely burning and entering the atmosphere. I had my first experience making a complaint. I contacted the COGCC, the County Oil and Gas Liaison, the CDPE and Air Quality Management at the CDPE's urging. The COGCC inspector, who went to the site, called me to tell me he couldn't see anything. That was the next day. I, of course, offered to bring him my photos and the video. He declined, then said that it was a lime freeze. He said methane and other gases were being burned off as a safety precaution under COGCC rules. The AQMD representative, though, did ask for my photo. He wrote that while the burn-off is allowed under safety rules, smoke entering the atmosphere is a violation of state air quality regulations. We don't know yet what the investigative outcomes will be, but we do know that a company that wants to drill 140 to 160 wells from nine sites surrounding 10,000 homes in North Commerce City should have the equipment and common sense to contain its emissions. By the way, the current count to the COGCC is 144 wells. We don't know where the other 16 will be. I wanted to draw this to your attention as you consider a company that wants to do business with you, that we've already had two incidences of concern at the only extraction oil and gas site near our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jamie Anderson, is that correct? Broomfield?
Lori.
Lori, I'm sorry, thank you.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council members, my name is Lori Anderson. I am a resident of Broomfield. And I'm here tonight to just give you a little glimpse of Extraction Oil and Gas from the viewpoint of an impacted resident of Broomfield. I lived near the 86-well plan in Broomfield. Despite thousands of emails and hundreds of individual public comments, our voices were not heard. We ended up with 40 wells just north of us on their Coyote site and 86 wells approved in Broomfield, 19 of them just out my back window across the roadway. The presentations and documentation from Extraction will likely indicate what a great neighbor they are, however their actions toward our communities painted a different reality. Broomfield created a task force in 2017 to address the changing landscape of oil and gas development and the need to update our city's regulations to keep pace. Horizontal fracturing is relatively new, with the first horizontally fracked well just back in, in Colorado, just back in 2009, and with the transition to the point at which the majority of wells are horizontally fracked just back in 2012. Our state is aware of the need to address the scale, proximity, and intensity of oil and gas development based on the rapid increase in technology, but change legs behind. As a result of the Broomfield Task Force recommendations and with final negotiations with the city of Broomfield, Extraction Oil and Gas agreed to do a risk analysis. Extraction provided multiple revisions of their comprehensive drilling plan in which they included a risk matrix, which, when the math was done, indicated a 57% cumulative risk of a catastrophic failure for the project over the 30-year life for those 86 wells in Broomfield. Not trusting the outcome of that math, Broomfield staff had the cumulative risk calculation verified by a university professor. Then Extraction claimed it wasn't their risk matrix, even though it had been a part of their CDP for several months and several iterations. And Extraction promptly deleted it from their final, now-final CDP. The city of Broomfield listed the risk analysis as a condition of their final CD approval, CDP approval. However, in the end, the Broomfield city manager approved the CDP without the required risk analysis and put the onus on the city of Broomfield to date the risk analysis has not been completed. When challenged to answer questions about the extractions, about the Stromberger 20E explosion and the fire back last December, and the risks associated with residential fracking, Extraction reps left the Broomfield council meeting in a huff. Risks include fire, explosion, well blowout, leaks, spills, pipeline ruptures, chemical exposure, surface soil contamination, odor, noise pollution, light pollution, stress, traffic congestion, traffic fatality, accident, natural disasters, serious worker fatalities, and more, and also SEC filings. This is written right in their SEC filing. There is inherent risk of incurring significant environmental costs and liabilities in the performance of our operations due to our handling of petroleum hydrocarbons and other hazardous substances and wastes as a result of air emissions and wastewater discharges related to our operations and because of historical operations and waste disposal practices at or leased and owned properties, spill, spills or the releases of regulated substances. Time's up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to leave with one thought here. Sorry, I couldn't finish that, but Extraction has several lawsuits in which they are either included directly in it or a party of interest. I want you to consider their actions, other communities going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Russ. Wait, I'll let you say it.
It's really just Heidi Henkel. Hi, I'm Heidi Henkel from Broomfield, Colorado. Citizens of Broomfield have dealt with Extraction Oil and Gas, so I just want to encourage you to reach out to the other city council in that area. So while you will hear from Extraction that they have the best regulations, I'm here to point out that the best regulations aren't good enough for Commerce City. You need enforcement. I sent you an email depicting past violations of Extraction Oil and Gas. In the email, I depicted and laid out the spills and fines they've had to pay. I've also shared the fact that they promised a risk assessment and decided to include it in the CDP, but they did not include it in the final one. And this is what Lori was just explaining to you. They just up and left our city council hearing. When pressed about the risk assessment, it revealed a 1 in 4 chance of catastrophe. The COGCC said that there's no room for error in our project. We have 84 wells planned in our area, close to future drinking water reservoir, two schools, and many playgrounds in the C470-I25 interchange, which, if there's an explosion there, it would cripple that area and thousands of homes. Please read the deep account of the article I sent to you on Extraction's last explosion in Windsor, where even the fire chief said that we have a lot to be worried about. Please scrutinize your own city regulations regarding oil and gas, making sure that there's public comment in every step of the process, that you have a right to protest, and you have a vote from the entire city council and not just a city manager. Check out your BMPs, your water usage. They can actually recycle their water. There's a company in Longmont that will recycle the water, so we need to make sure that we are being very vigilant about our water. Our air quality to be tested, including benzene and noise and, of course, dust. I would also look at their unstable stock prices and make sure that we have sufficient bonding and payment for air quality monitoring and so on. Think about what your land could look like in a sustainable system. And instead of having these unsustainable boom and bust oil and gas developments in these areas, and wait until the COGCC and the new governor and our new House and our new Senate have new rules in Colorado and step what you, step up what you can locally. Commerce City deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Guillermo Serna.
Hi.
Good evening.
Guillermo Serna. Do you need the address?
Yes, sir.
140122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022.
Thank you.
It's on your lap. Decision has already been made. What you have to come up with is some sort of a commission that can regulate whatever's coming out of the ground and how they do it, and all of that. Notice the people that are concerned about it. It's the mothers. They're the ones that, in a sense, care the most about their children. Notice the fires in California. They say no mistakes, but hey, it happens. When you used to mine gold or copper, we are looking at sometimes the after-effects almost 70, 80 years later, where you mess up a whole river and then come back and try and clean it up. That's what you have to do. Bring both the companies and the communities to look at how they can work with a commission so that you can keep this city growing, which was promised when we did the infrastructure. None of this was promised. It was insinuated that it would be a clean city, industrial-wise, that the community had already had enough of dirty industry. Whether it's on top or whether it's on the bottom, you're gonna have to know and educate that commission so that they know what questions to ask, what data to look at, and report back to you. And it's only fair to the community so that they know where they can go to make complaints and be heard in perspective and then bring it to you as to those concerns on the yearly basis. This isn't the only ones that are going to be built. There's going to be more and more and more. We know it. But there's other ways of doing it. That's what I'm looking at in what I see from the parents that are caring for their properties, for their children, for their surroundings, for their environment. And right now, it's going to be up to you to look at those types of things and come up with those regulations in combination with these companies that are going to keep, keep coming. Insurance. Who's at fault? Who isn't? Those are the things that we have to do. So please keep that in mind. And it's neither for nor against, but somehow we gotta work together to make it safer for these people to stay where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Gilbert.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Treese Gilbert, and I'm from Greeley, Colorado. Drove down tonight just to share some of our experiences up in Greeley dealing with extraction. My words would be, use precaution when dealing with this industry, and I'll just, I have two examples. And also, I like to start off with just their financials. If you checked NASDAQ on Friday, they closed under $7. They've been allowed to buy back some of their stock to avoid a run. So promises of BMPs' best management practices may not be fulfilled because they can't really keep the margins up and do, follow through with some of those best management practices. I bring, I don't know who I give these to, but nine packets.
Give them to the attorney right here.
These were, happened about this time last year. One was volitional, intentional, where they, Extraction, their niche is residential drilling. And five years ago, they would have this on their website. At Triple Creek about this time last year, due to reasons that we're not really sure, we followed up on COGCC. These packets contain the data. They flared a lot of toxic emissions and VOCs right in the middle of West Greeley, a highly dense populated area. And, excuse me, I'm a little getting over sick. And, excuse me, I'm a little getting over sick. You know, if we didn't bird dog this, if we weren't on this all the time watching what's happening at these sites, it wouldn't have been caught. But the residents noticed that their breathing was not good, and it turns out that this was the cause. Another example I bring is from the Stromberger Fire that happened in Windsor, right before last Christmas, where Extraction had a multi-well explosion. I include pictures. I'm a teacher, so I always do that, to help you see what an explosion of this kind looks like a mile away. So it was taken from surveillance camera at the parking lot at the old Kodak plant up there. The explosion was felt over five miles away by residents. And a lot of what was emitted that night went west against the foothills, lay over Fort Collins for about 24 hours, and then most of the emissions went down south to the Boulder Reservoir where it was picked up there by Instar and their air quality equipment. So there's so much to know about this company. Again, I just urge up in Wild County and in Greeley in particular, we've dealt with this company for years. Know that they will promise things that really they can't deliver. So please be vigilant, vigilant. One of you has to get real good at looking at that COGCC website. Bird dog, know, get your own FLIR camera. I hope you do in Commerce City. And just, again, precaution. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren.
Hi, I'm Lauren Swin, and I live in North Denver, not in Adams County, but I have a lot of friends that live here. I've spent a lot of time here. I know that Adams County and Commerce City have a lot of aspirations to become a destination, to build their economy, to improve their home values, improve their tax base, improve their governance. And I think that Commerce City and Adams County should be very proud of that. We have a new opportunity. This is a new era after the election. We have new legislators. We have a new governor. The understanding up until very recently is that local governments have very few rights to turn down these proposed fracking operations, and essentially that state preemption has allowed these dangerous, destructive, unacceptably hazardous operations to go into neighborhoods wherever the industry wants them. And those days can be over for Commerce City and the rest of the state, and it can begin here. You can seek to not allow these operations into Adams County. You can seek to continue to build your tax base, to build your home values, to build the safety and comfort of your communities, to build the safety and quality of your schools, or you can let this industry do what it wants and endanger this community with explosions, fires, spills, traffic, noise, and all the unacceptable destructive human rights violations that have accompanied this industry's behavior so far in Colorado and much of the rest of the country. It can begin here, and I recommend that it does because Commerce City does not have a good reputation regionally, but it could. Commerce City is thought of as a place where you go when you have nowhere else to go, but that can change. And you can make the change by making it a safer, cleaner, less polluted, more attractive community by keeping out these destructive polluting industries. And you can go to the new legislators, and you can go to the new governor, and you can go to the federal government, and you can go to the Congress and the Senate to get your rights for your people and your future. And I recommend that you do because most of the rest of Colorado is not impressed so far, but that can change, and I'd like to see it change. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica.
My name is Jessica Abel, 1300 North Pennsylvania, Denver, Colorado, 80203. But I, I am a resident of Denver, but I serve as the Colorado Organizer for Green Faith, which is a global organization that seeks to advocate and nurture and support faith leaders around issues of stewardship of our planet and our resources. It's the part of the sacred stories of all people of faith to be stewards of what we have been given. There are many ways in which we approach this, many ways in which I talk about it, many ways in which we journey through that, but it is part of our shared story. Sometimes I talk to congregations or synagogues or mosques, and sometimes I address community groups, and sometimes I address elected officials in an advocacy way and an educational way, and sometimes I just plead. And I find myself in that situation with you here, that you represent one of the communities here in this area that is already vulnerable. You already have vulnerable populations. Your air is already vulnerable. Your water is already vulnerable. Your soil is already vulnerable. You are the stewards of this city, of Commerce City in this place. You have been called on by these people, by the people who live here, by the people who work here, by the people yet to be born here, to be stewards of their safety, their health, their general welfare. And only you can decide what their future is going to look like. I want to urge you to look at different definitions of highest and best use, that an economic engine of change and renewal can also come from restoration. It can also come from remaking. It can also come from building and working together and seeking a different way of living on this planet. The way that we have been doing it is not working well for most of us. It's not working well for the vulnerable among us, and things are going to get more difficult. Fires will continue, earthquakes will continue, floods will continue. I hate to be the bearer of doom, but people dressed like me often are. And so I remind you that you have a call to lead and to find new ways forward, and that you have choices. You can choose to live differently, and I believe your people are calling you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our citizen communication portion of our meeting this evening. We'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They're presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are nine items on the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove anything off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Hughesman.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
For a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney read the titles of the consent agenda?
Minutes of October 1, 2018, minutes of October 15, 2018, minutes of November 5, 2018, ordinance 2184, and ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 12-5005 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Prohibited Solicitations. Resolution 2018-94, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for the provision of municipal court video services. Resolution 2018-95, resolution amending the directory of city fees and charges. Resolution 2018-96, resolution approving grant of access easement to Fairmount Cemetery Company and rescinding prior grant of access easement. Resolution 2018-97, resolution regarding posting locations for ordinances in public meetings. Resolution 2018-98, resolution canceling city council meetings that fall on officially scheduled city holidays.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Yeah, we can't see anything up here on our screens. There, it was there for a second. There. All right. It's unanimous. Motion's carried. Consent agenda is approved. The only vote not there is the excused absence from Councilwoman Elliott. All right, now we go to ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2158, 2185 through 2191, and ordinance 2194 for minor LDC amendments. We will have one presentation in public comment period for all of the ordinances for these collected amendments to the Land Development Code, and then discussion and vote on each ordinance separately. I'd like to invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Are you saying to the whole ordinance or to a section?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. There are several amendments before you this evening to our Land Development Code. There's a total of nine ordinances tonight, and I'll explain the purpose for that here in just a minute. But first, I want to give you some background on the Land Development Code. It was adopted by the city council in early 2009, and this is the document that we use to ensure quality, consistent, and predictable development throughout the city on a variety of different topics. It is a living document, which means that it is being continually monitored by staff, and we regularly update it through annual amendments as well as through special topic amendments, which you've seen before and will see again in the near future, including some additional updates for oil and gas, signs, and cluster homes. The purpose of these amendments is to ensure that the code is continuing to reflect the needs of the community by doing some minor additions and deletions when we need to do them, to clarify our existing regulations and to modernize standards as new development trends come forward. In the 2018 round of amendments, there are five general categories and 35 total proposed amendments. The five categories that these amendments fall into are definitions, design standards, fencing, the land use table, and process clarifications. And for legal clarity, nine of these, or eight additional amendments, will be adopted as separate ordinances, including all of the land use table amendments. It's important to note as part of this, though, that no properties will be rezoned. This is just the regulatory side of things. To explain a little bit about where we've been in this process, earlier this year, we held study sessions with both the planning commission and city council to get your feedback on these, or on these amendments as we were considering the specific language. And we incorporated the feedback we received in those study sessions into the amendments that you're presented with tonight. On November 7, 2018, the planning commission recommended approval of all of these amendments as they're shown tonight. There have been a couple of minor tweaks in the legal formatting, but the content of all the amendments is the identical to how planning commission saw them a couple weeks ago. So you're hearing them tonight, and then the second reading on these amendments will be in December. So we will be ready to go with, beginning to roll these out early in the new year. And as I start to get into these, just for the sake of time, I won't be discussing each individual amendment specifically, but they're all listed in your packet, and certainly feel free to stop me if you have questions about any of them as we get going. So the main ordinance that has the bulk of the amendments in it is 2158. This includes various general minor amendments, including new definitions and updating some of our existing definitions. It will also be modifying various design standards as listed here, including increasing the maximum allowed driveway width from 24 feet to 30 feet for three-plus car garages. Within our fencing standards, these are the proposed amendments, which include relaxing restrictions on residential fences for corner lot properties, and that was based on community feedback and a comparison with other jurisdictions. In our processes, the amendments are to clarify requirements and to clean up discrepancies that we have within the code. So that's the first ordinance we'll be talking about tonight. This next ordinance is number 2185 regarding height exceptions, which will add a definition or a description, excuse me, to clarify the purpose of the height exception process. And then we'll also be updating the approval criteria to more accurately reflect that Ordinance 2186 is regarding small cell telecommunications facilities, such as the one shown here on the slide. And these amendments will update our existing regulations for facilities within the right-of-way as well as add new regulations for facilities to be located on brand-new poles located within the right-of-way without a functional component such as a light. And in general, these regulations are seeking to match any existed or, any existing or adopted streetscape design so that we have a relatively consistent appearance within our public rights-of-way and to underground any overhead utilities that are serving the This next ordinance will modify the approval criteria for minor modifications to reduce the parking requirements. At the moment, in order to get a reduction in the parking requirements, you have to meet all five approval criteria, and reducing the number that must be met from five to two, including one that, which requires that it be a non-residential use, would allow greater flexibility for infill development and for redevelopment of sites that are already basically existing and are constrained by the limitations that presently exist. Ordinance 2188 will provide new courtyard wall standards. We don't currently have this fence style in the code, but it is referenced within our residential design standards as something that's desired in order to allow people to have more private enclosed outdoor living spaces. And so these regulations will be providing some, the standards for height setback and design of this style of fencing. Ordinance 2189 will be the land use table. We are adding several new uses that have come to us as something that the community feels is a necessary inclusion in the city, and we don't currently have in our code. So it's including these uses that are shown here. Ordinance 2190 is specifically regarding one use that we are adding. It's the bulk grain transfer facilities. This is a new use that's somewhere in between a trucking terminal and a grain elevator. It's really an on, of one location, transfer of grain between one truck or railcar to another, no storage on-site. And so this is a new use that we haven't had previously in the city, and we are proposing to allow that as a use-by-permit in the I-2 zone district and a use-by-right in the I-3 zone district. There are also some definition and supplemental regulations that go along with this particular use, which is why it's its own separate ordinance. Ordinance 2191 is regarding hazardous material supplemental regulations to clarify when exactly a conditional use permit is required for a, for a use that uses any sort of hazardous materials. A strict interpretation of our current standards would require that some commercial uses, such as supermarkets or hardware stores, that sell and stock reasonably large quantities of those types of materials would have to be in an I-3 zone district, which is our highest intensity industrial, and would require a CUP. And so this supplemental regulation will clarify that that's actually only required when an H occupancy under the Building and Fire Code is needed. That gives us a lot greater flexibility for the variety of industrial uses that we have and encourages investment in the upgrade income of our existing industrial buildings with things like fire sprinklers or modifying operational habits to reduce the risk on-site. And then finally, ordinance 2194 regarding outdoor storage and material piles would add aggregate piles, which is things like mulch, road base, gravel, that are in heights of over eight feet, to the land use table as a conditional use permit in the I-2 and I-3 zone districts. And this would also clarify that our outdoor storage yards do have surfacing requirements and screening requirements, making sure that those are clear and explicit within our code. So that's the end of the ordinances that we have for you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff concerning any of the ordinances? Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. On this hazardous material supplement regulations, does that have to do with, like propane storage? When you definition of hazardous material, could you expand on that?
Absolutely. So hazardous materials, the propane storage in particular, that would, depending on the quantity, potentially fall under a CUP on its own because of the above-ground storage tank. This would more apply to things like if you have cleaning chemical storage on-site. Some supermarkets and hardware stores probably have a relatively large quantity of those types of materials, but they're not required to be in an I-3 zone district or with a CUP because of the nature of how they store those things and the constraints of what exactly the buildings provide already. So they're not considered a hazardous occupancy under the building code. But sometimes if you're perhaps manufacturing those types of products, that may trigger an H occupancy under the building code, and so that's when it would be required to be an I-3 and CUP. Does that clarify that enough for you?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other ordinance is 2194, outdoor storage material piles. So I know there's certain companies that do have mulch and other aggregate products, and there's been complaints about that blowing around and migrating over to someone else's property. And now, as far as height and piles covers, how tall did the screening and the coverage have to be? Is that based on the piles?
The height and screening is for any of those piles that are over eight feet in height. That would be subject to what City Council ultimately decides, since the conditional use permit is a discretionary form of approval issued by this body. Currently, we do have several of those types of uses existing in the city. Most of them are, to my knowledge, non-conforming because they existed before we had height limitations on outdoor storage stacking, and we don't really have anything to address those types of uses that were already existing, and this gives us a way to regulate new uses that come in that assume that it's allowed because they see it already existing. And so again, as a conditional use permit, it does give us a greater level of flexibility and discretion to require additional impact mitigation, if that means higher fencing, if that means additional landscaping, if that means a certain maximum limit on whatever the height can be. It has the flexibility to allow us to do that.
Okay. And then ordinance 2187, basic is for non-residential parking, right?
That's correct. The only exception that would potentially be residential would be if it's specifically for senior housing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions from the Council at this time? Saying none, if anyone in the audience wishes to address the Council on the ordinances that are before us.
Mayor Ford, may I just note also, there's one item that the Planning Commission recommended that was in the works regarding process and revocations of permits. At my recommendation, that was being continued and isn't on the agenda tonight because we're going to be looking at our hearing officer process overall, so we'll be looking at that in the spring to bring that back.
Thank you. All right, no one in the audience that wishes to speak to the Council concerning the ordinances that are before us? I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission regarding these ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Hughesman.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings of the planning and, the planning, findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item is ordinance 21, let's see here. Ordinance is on second reading.
Mayor Ford, it's a two-
Grant funds, 2192. Is that the one?
The first one is 2158.
2158 miscellaneous amendments. All right. I'm open for a motion on first reading. Mr. Davis.
I move that we, a motion for ordinance 2158 miscellaneous amendments.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2158. Council is seated. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
I will read, read the title.
Read the title first, please.
Ordinance 2158, an ordinance amending various sections of the Land Development Code, including requirements for floodplain development permits, minor modifications to PUDs, zone documents, revocation of land use approvals, childcare facilities, bulk standards for accessory uses and structures, driveway widths, electric vehicle parking spaces, administrative variances, screening requirements for mechanical equipment, development standards for single-family dwelling garages, utility undergrounding exceptions, fencing and wall standards, and related definitions.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, is introduced by Council unanimously this evening. Next, we have ordinance 2185, which is the height exceptions. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve ordinance 2185 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the Council? Saying none, will the City Attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2185, an ordinance amending Section 21-3220 of the Land Development Code relating to height exceptions.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2185 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Now, 2186, small cell tower communication facilities. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Madera.
Move to approve ordinance 2186, small cell communication facilities, by the Council is seated.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Saying none, City Attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2186, an ordinance amending Sections 21-5602, 21-5606, and 21-11200 of the Land Development Code and enacting a new Section 21-5607 to the Land Development Code relating to small cell telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance 2186 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Next is ordinance 2187, minor modifications for off-street parking. Mr. Douglas?
I'd like to make a motion, ordinance 2187, minor modifications, Council is seated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from Council? Saying none, will the Attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2187, an ordinance amending Section 21-7238 of the Land Development Code, providing for minor modifications relating to off-street parking requirements.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance 2187, introduced unanimously by the City Council. Ordinance 2188, wall standards. Mr. Davis.
Make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance 2188, courtyard wall standards.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank.
Second motion.
Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the City Attorney read the title?
Ordinance 2188, an ordinance enacting a new Section 21-7736 of the Land Development Code relating to courtyard wall standards.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2188, introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Next is ordinance 2189. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve ordinance 2189 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Wardiola.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the Attorney read the title?
Ordinance 2189, an ordinance amending Section 21-5200 of the Land Development Code relating to allowable uses in city zoning districts.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance 2189 is unanimously introduced this evening by City Council. We have ordinance 2190, bulk grain transfer facilities. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
Ask, approve the ordinance 2190, bulk grain transfer facilities. Council is seated on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Hughesman.
Second. I have a motion to approve ordinance 2190, bulk grain transfer facilities on first reading.
All right. Is there any discussion from Council? Saying none, will the City Attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2190, an ordinance amending Sections 21-5200 and 21-11200 of the Land Development Code and enacting a new Section 21-5223 in the Land Development Code relating to bulk grain transfer facilities.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2190 is introduced unanimously by the City Council. We go to 2191, hazardous materials. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve ordinance 2191 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the Attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2191, an ordinance enacting a new Section 21-5239 to the Land Development Code, providing for supplemental regulation of hazardous materials.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2191 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Next, we have ordinance 2194, outdoor storage and material piles. Open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2194, outdoor storage material piles. Council is seated first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Madera.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the Attorney read the title?
Ordinance 2194, an ordinance amending Sections 21-5200 and 21-5254 of the Land Development Code relating to outdoor storage standards, including standards for materials piles.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2194 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Now we come to ordinance 2192, grant funds. Does anyone on Council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Davis, you have a question?
No, no, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the Council on the matter of ordinance 2192? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Madera.
Move to approve ordinance 2192 on first reading.
Mr. Davis.
I second the motion for ordinance 2192.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Will the Attorney read the title?
Ordinance 2192, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Health Foundation grant in the amount of $1,105,000 for the Healthy Places Commerce City program and in the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance 2192 is unanimously supported by the Council this evening. All right, we come to ordinances on second reading, ordinance 2183, which is our oil and gas Land Development Code amendments. This ordinance was passed unanimously on first reading, but will be considered on second reading separately due to the subject matter and the need for amendments. Will the City Attorney please discuss the recommended amendments?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. After passage on first reading, the City received written comments, some of which were well-taken by staff, to amend certain items in the proposed ordinance amendments as they previously were. Those were presented to each member on the dais tonight, and they are in the back of the room available for public consumption. I would note that they generally involve deleting some application requirements regarding mineral ownership and lessy information, inserting the words that are technically and economically practicable in the section where the city is imposing a requirement to use best available technologies to control odor and dust and noise, and then to provide a standard for city inspectors to ensure safety upon inspection, that the city inspectors be properly trained or certified to conduct inspections in a safe manner or be escorted, and then with regard to the city's ability to temporarily suspend activities under a city oil and gas permit, limiting those, suspensions to those activities that are actually governed by the city under the permit, providing the operator with an opportunity to do so in a safe manner, and then to avoid the city from attempting to cease activities that are governed by the state that would be outside of the limit of the city's authority and could present a safety concern to shut down operations in a prompt manner. Two more amendments. One was to change a requirement that an operator pay for the city's attorney's costs and fees in the event of enforcement action to be if the city prevails in that matter, and then to change the effective date, which had previously said November 5, when this was planned to be put on for second reading. This will become operational in accordance with the Charter, which is upon posting and publication after passage on second reading, which could be this evening. To pass these amendments as opposed to going through them serially, I would propose doing it like the consent agenda after the opportunity for public comment and discussion goes, and if Council wanted to adopt all of these together, they could do so in bulk. So that's in the script for discussion after there's an opportunity for further discussion and public input.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the Council that has questions regarding the ordinance before us? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughesley. As far as ordinance and in bulk, our separate line items like they were previously that we just voted on, if that was to take place, how many are we talking about?
As far as the amendments?
Yeah.
It would be, one, two, three, four, five, seven.
Seven, okay.
And Councilmembers could remove a certain one if you wanted to discuss those separately or vote on them separately.
All right.
All right, any other discussion from Council? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the Council on this matter? Come on up, state your name and address for the record. You're given three minutes.
Mayor and Councilmember, Susan Noble, 10642 O'Leath Street. Last week, two city councils responded to their residents' protests and took immediate and decisive action that led to Highland's Natural Resources withdrawing its applications to frac Stanley Lake and Rocky Flats, the Superfund site known for plutonium. In 2012, after Commerce City was first confronted with oil and gas fracking, this city council responded in the same way to your constituents' outcry. The headline of the April 2012 Denver Post article read, "No Drilling at Rocky Mountain Arsenal." Arsenal, Bar Lake Under Oil and Gas Rules Mulled By Commerce City Council." Quoting from the article, "Changing both the land use code and writing extraction agreements offers another layer of protection for Commerce City residents," said Acting Community Development Director Chris Kramer. "Combined with the state's local government designee process, proposed amendments to the land use development code and draft extraction agreements, when taken as a whole, represent a wide array of new tools and requirements," said Kramer. Ultimately, Commerce City Council members approved setbacks from Bar Lake, a protected eagle nesting site and former landfill, and from Rocky Mountain Arsenal, a superfund site that once made sarin gas and mustard gas and is home to the first known human-caused earthquakes when fluids were injected into a well. Not just any setbacks, mind you, but setbacks of one mile. That language is included in the city's model extraction agreement under section five point six. It reads Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge and Bar Lake State Park setback. There shall be no surface or underground disturbance within one mile from the outermost boundary of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge or Bar Lake State Park. However, despite the language in your model extraction agreement, despite meetings with staff and the mayor, and despite the state's often touted oil and gas regulations, extraction oil and gas applied for multiple spacing units that abut the boundaries of the arsenal and horizontally frac under Bar Lake State Park. Why would extraction oil and gas possibly think that that's okay? On behalf of North Range concerned citizens, we ask for your assurances tonight that there is no language in the revised ordinance that nullifies the one-mile setback and that it is an immutable section of the model extraction agreement, which protects not only Commerce City residents, their air and their water, but also that of the entire metro basin. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the attorney to tell us what is regulated for setbacks regarding Bar Lake and the Wildlife Refuge.
The setbacks referenced are included in the model extraction agreements as a starting point for negotiations with operators. They're not included with the land development code and they are not regulations that the city is guaranteed to impose in any particular permitting instance.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on the matter of the changes to our land development code? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Ryan Sestrom. I'm with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, eighteen hundred Glen Arm Place, Denver, eight zero two zero two. Thank you for the opportunity to address me this evening regarding the amendments in front of you. I'm here tonight to speak on the land use code amendments and express several concerns that COGA has with them as currently drafted. COGA did submit red lines to the city's attorney's office and LGD on October twenty sixth, offering to discuss our comments. COGA is thankful for the opportunity to discuss our red lines with the city staff last Friday, and we hope the city takes our comments into consideration this evening. One of our most significant concerns is with the city's prohibition of injection wells and other types of disposal facilities. For the Fort Collins and Longmont Supreme Court cases, not only are bans on oil and natural gas development unlawful, but the bans on the storage of wastewater is as well. Several industries, including manufacturing and municipal wastewater services, use injection wells, so this is not an issue that is unique to the oil and natural gas industry. Several other municipalities are updating or have already updated their wastewater rules, and if you would like me to connect you on that front, I would be happy to do so. COGA's outside counsel will be up after me to address the specific issue in greater detail. Other concerns of ours pertain to the prohibition of temporary onsite housing at oil and gas facilities. This can cause quite the safety issue on pad sites. Permit term length and code amendments related to the siting of oil and gas operations. You can find our full comments and the red lines submitted to the city earlier today, and I will leave a hard copy with the staff before I leave the podium. COGA does appreciate the opportunity to comment this evening and is thankful for the opportunity to engage in this process. As the city looks towards a larger, more comprehensive code update, we ask the city to continue to consider COGA an industry as a stakeholder in that process. We do appreciate the constructive dialogue from council and staff and look forward to continuing to work with the city in the future. As always, please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Julia Ryan. I'm outside counsel to COGA with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek located at four ten seventeenth Street, Denver, Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Teco Ryan, COGA appreciates the time that staff has put into updating these regulations, and we particularly applaud the changes that have been made on this second reading. Although COGA supports some aspects of the code's revisions, COGA opposes others, particularly the city's proposed ban on a number of items, including temporary housing, which is necessary for operational safety and for the safety of your surrounding community members, and, as Ryan discussed, the ban on injection wells, which are used to safely dispose of oil and gas exploration and production waste. Due to limited time, I will focus my remarks on the injection well issue, but I urge you to look at COGA's comments for other concerns, including our concern that the code does not provide for a path for development under a permit only, but instead requires operators to execute an extraction agreement. Turning to injection wells, I first note that they are regulated and permitted at the state level by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. The process to obtain state-level approval to operate an injection well is robust and includes noticing nearby surface owners and owners of water wells, and like other commission permits, it includes the opportunity for the public to provide comment. The commission permit process involves review and reapproval of well construction, isolation of groundwater aquifers, maximum injection pressure and volume, injection zone water quality, and an exhaustive analysis of the well's potential for seismicity. Given the state's authorization and exhaustive regulation of injection wells, local governments do not have the authority to ban injection wells. Local government laws banning injection wells are illegal because such bans fail the operational conflict test set forth by the Colorado Supreme Court in the Longmont and Fort Collins cases. As articulated by the Colorado Supreme Court in those cases, a local law is in operational conflict with state law and therefore preempted and void where the local law materially impedes the effectuation of a state interest, or, most relevant here, where it forbids what state law authorizes. State law authorizes injection wells. The commission has issued an exhaustive set of rules and regulations pertaining specifically to how and when injection wells may be authorized by the state. Because state law authorizes injection wells, any local law forbidding injection wells is in conflict with state law and illegal. Further, Longmont specifically held that the municipality's prohibition on the storage or disposal of hydraulic fracturing waste in open pits was illegal, and there is no distinguishable difference between the storage of fracking waste in an open pit or an injection well. Indeed, the Colorado Supreme Court did not discuss the fact that the prohibition related to open pits, but rather held comprehensively that a moratorium, oh, cliffhanger, you have to read all of our comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Lori Anderson. I live at three four nine six Yale Drive, resident of Broomfield, and I'd like to note to this council that residents and members of COGA came before the Broomfield City Council a few months ago and told them that their regulations were not acceptable for these same similar reasons, and the Broomfield Council held strong to their regulations and approved them as is, and to date, nothing has happened. I would also like to note that Broomfield has banned injection wells, and my understanding from our city is that you do not have to accept injection wells in this community. I do not know if you have a local government designee. If you do, that's the perfect person to have start reaching out to communities like Broomfield and other impacted communities and understand that you have a lot more power than you may realize, and if you do not have a local government designee, now is the time to get one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Since municipal cities were mentioned, what is the difference between a municipal city and a home rule city? Is there an explanation on how that affects this whole process?
Not when it comes to what's preempted by the state law. So, home rule cities like ourselves, we can make laws that are different than other laws that the state may have and might turn it over to the city attorney to better articulate it. However, when it comes to what's preempted by the state of Colorado, their law would trump anything our home rule would have the opportunity to impose. Is that correct, Mr.?
I'd be happy to issue a non-binding opinion briefly.
No, binding. You're the attorney.
So binding, home rule, we can do whatever we want, but non-binding, statutory towns and municipalities are organized basically as political subdivisions of the state by what the statutes are, and their powers are limited to what the state grants them, what the state assembly grants them. Home rule municipalities like Commerce City are organized pursuant to Article twenty of the Constitution, which means that they derive their power from the Constitution and are not totally limited to what the state gives them. But sometimes the general assembly can legislate and say home rule municipalities don't have authority to regulate something. They can take over an area so fully that means that municipalities, home rule municipalities can't regulate that area if these are matters of statewide concern, meaning they affect things beyond our jurisdiction and involve things throughout the state. The operational conflict test, though, is the third test legally that says the states, and this gets back into your time for sure, the state can regulate some activities, but the local governments still have the authority to regulate within that area, and that's a very, I'll say, meandering line where there continue to be differences within the courts between local governments and industries and the state at times.
If I may ask, who from the state can, let's say, interpret that the way, let's say, you're explaining it, but you're not committing to it in a sense, and I'm looking for an answer as to whether that can happen or not?
I will retroactively commit to everything I said, but also note that those discussions are thing, because they're so undefined, it has to be litigated, so the Supreme Court would ultimately be the one to say what the answer is.
So that could be challenged?
With regard to a particular regulation, yes.
Could you tell me which one it is?
Well, any of our regulations that the industry may claim are preempted, and if you don't mind, Mayor, if they were litigated, the city would defend them, and any group, whether it's the industry or not, might claim that it's preempted, and then ultimately they would determine if they can coexist in the same world or not, basically, so.
Okay. Now, I'm just looking at the differences in location and the culture of the area, as far as mountains, as far as cities, there's a lot there to be determined in finding out whether there is a difference and whether the city can make those decisions, because all I'm hearing, it's not quite sure, and I think that we have to make sure that we're interpreting everything right. Just a question, and you don't get into legalities later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Lauren Swain. I live at thirty-two seventy-seven Raleigh Street in Denver, Colorado, and I just want to point out that this is, you know, sturdy ball. This is a very aggressive industry that wants to undermine the will of local governments, of local populations in favor of more and more production at a time when prices are falling, at a time when these types of wells are scavenging this resource. So when you get a hundred and fifty wells going into an area in order to maintain production levels, you're going to need another hundred and fifty wells in three years, or it'll all be gone. So these are, but they're forcing, they're using the law, their interpretation of the law, to threaten communities. So this is bullying, you know, and I really don't think that our communities should succumb to bullying, and we should stand up and use our new opportunities with the governor and with the legislature and with ourselves and our movement to resist these hazardous destructive facilities going in close to homes. Maybe there's a place where they're safer, but they're not acceptable five hundred feet or even a half mile or even a mile from homes because we know that's the evacuation radius. Furthermore, this area, and I think the wisdom of this body is evident in banning the use of injection wells because this area is prone to earthquakes. The Rocky Mountain Arsenal has a history of earthquakes, and when initially those injection wells were used there, the wisdom prevailed that they should not be allowed to operate there anymore, and the wisdom continues to prevail here in this body that injection wells are inappropriate for this area. So I thank you for your wisdom, and I hope you will maintain these wise regulations to protect your community. And by the way, yeah, it doesn't stop at the borders of Commerce City or Adams County. It affects us all here in Colorado. We don't want to become Oklahoma with hundreds and hundreds of earthquakes happening everywhere. We want to maintain our quality of life and our health and safety with regulations like you've chosen wisely to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, saying none. Tonight, we will consider the attorney's proposed amendments as a group unless anyone on council wants to consider any of the amendments separately. Steve?
Yes, I just want to make a comment after that because after what we all heard, can I still talk?
You want to wait until we get into a discussion once I have a motion, or you want to do it now?
I like to do it now. I mean, if we can vote on these separate instead of as a body.
Well, that's what I just asked. Do you want us to vote on them separate?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, that's up to the council, so I have a motion to take all seven amendments separately. Is there a second to that, or do you want to do them as a group?
It would be Mr. Douglas's privilege to vote on them separately.
Then good, we'll do it separately. All right. I want to have the city attorney go through each one individually as we vote on them. Is that all right with you, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, but I just wanted to ask something here because, you know, it is kind of confusing here because I know back in two thousand and twelve, when the council was seated then, we did approve performance standards, and in the red line in the corrections, those performance standards were not included in this model extraction agreement. And if someone goes to our site and looks at this model, modeling extraction agreement, it does state, you know, as far as insert the name of the operator, extraction agreement and the application, Article one, and it all goes all the way down to Article five, I'm sorry, yeah, five, and in that Article five, it does have the setbacks that talks about twelve hundred and fifty feet as a minimum occupied building, space construction, private residential lots, and then five point six talks about Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge and Bar Lake being, and if you shield no surface or underground disturbance within one mile from the outermost boundaries of the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge and Bar Lake. And I know a month ago that was asked, the mayor asked if that was in there, and I know they stated it wasn't, but this is part of a performance standards, and I think that this Article five should be included in this ordinance.
Mr. Sheasley?
A month ago, when you asked, you asked if it was in the regulations, I believe, and it is not in the regulations. If it's included in the model extraction agreement, then that's in the model extraction agreement. The regulations as presented to be modified here, I don't believe have changed in any major way since two thousand and twelve, so nothing was taken out, and the extraction agreement isn't contemplated as being changed here. The structure of the extraction agreement by these amendments remains the same, and these are intended to be minor modifications, and that's why major stakeholder and community input was not provided here. So that's, that's why those were never part of the regulations and aren't proposed to be here.
Okay, so I'm kind of confused here, so if it's in a modeling... So if it's in a modeling agreement, I'm sorry, our modeling extraction agreement, but then was proposed, that doesn't include this as far as permitting process, correct?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. They were, whatever was in the model extraction agreement is the model extraction agreement. The regulations are the regulations that require, A, an extraction agreement, but it does, the regulations don't dictate what must be in the extraction agreement. And that is not the intent to dictate what is in the extraction agreement. It is a negotiation between an operator and the city to reach an agreement before a permit proceeds.
Okay. So this modeling performance standard is just negotiation tool, right?
That the extraction agreement is negotiated, yes.
Okay. Well, it's just the point where we can, I can ask to put, to make sure these performance standards are part of this ordinance? That way, it's the one mile, I don't want to go through what, as far as Rocky Flats went through in the whole ordeal. I think we can, that's been set, and let's, let's be a good example of putting this in the ordinance as, as the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge and Bar Lake is being setback one mile and not have to go through as far as that being a negotiation piece.
Council could certainly move to amend the ordinance that's pending to include that. If council wanted to do that, we would need to find the appropriate place for it to happen. I would also like to provide you with some legal analysis on that in executive session if you wanted to do that. Given the nature of these as not being substantive or intended to drastically change the land development code in either direction, I would not recommend doing it as part of this ordinance, but possibly to consider it as a separate ordinance if council wanted to do that.
Okay. And then I know, you know, the election pass and everything, and as far as that one ballot measure, 112, it did come within 5.2%. And so that really does say people are aware of what's going on and making sure that the regulations that we set in the ordinance also deals with public health and safety, which that's embedded in this ordinance several places. So that's, so as far as voting on each one of these, like I said, in no way, shape, that things could be added at this time to amend that, and let's ask to be a separate ordinance to add at the end. Is that correct?
Council is able to amend any ordinance on second reading. Frankly, I wouldn't know where to put anything at this point, so we'd have to study that and figure out a way to do that, which we could do this evening if council wanted to do that. If there is a major change, it would then pass over to a third reading. So, but if that's council's desire, we can certainly figure out a way to accommodate it.
Okay. Another question, too. As far as coming to the point we're at right now, is there a way we could reboot this and put this back to a study session?
Council is able to defeat any ordinance. It's up tonight on second reading. Council could direct that it, could vote it down and then bring it up at a study session again if you wanted to. There's an opportunity for discussion right now, though, so I would recommend taking action on the ordinance that's on your agenda, or it would just bypass and fail for failure to take action this evening if nobody moved to approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to take these one at a time. I'll have the city attorney spell out each amendment to the ordinance. Now, remember that we did approve the ordinance on first reading. These are seven minor amendments, correct?
Yes, Mayor Ford, and I could just state a motion for each one, and a council member could make it if they desired.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, so the first would be a motion to strike out Section 21-5266, Prince Three, Prince A, Prince Romanate Six, Prince Romanate Seven.
Mr. Madera?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Wardiola?
Second.
It would just be a voice vote on each.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Order number two.
A motion to insert the words, quote, "that are technically and economically practicable", end quote, after the word technologies in Section 21-5266, Prince Six, Prince A.
Mr. Madera?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Davis?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We have one nay, eight ayes, or I'm sorry, seven ayes. Motion's carried. Go with number?
The next would be a motion, I'm sorry.
Four. Go ahead.
Three. A motion to insert the words, quote, "that are technically and economically practicable", end quote, after the word technologies in Section 21-5266, Prince Six, Prince B.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mr. Madera?
So moved.
Mr. Wardiola?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, six aye, two nay. Motion's carried. Number four.
A motion to insert the words, quote, "the city's inspectors will be properly trained or certified to conduct inspections in a safe manner or escorted by such a person", end quote, at the end, I'm sorry, at the end of Section 21-5266, Prince Twelve, Prince B.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Teeter?
Like to make a motion to approve that one.
Okay. Mr. Madera?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So, seven aye, one nay. All right.
Then the next would be to substitute the entire section, 21-5266, Prince Four, fourteen, Prince B, with the following new, Section 14B entitled Suspension of Oil and Gas Permit, stating in the event the city determines that the operators violated any term or condition of this code, the oil and gas permit, or the strikeout EA, insert, extraction agreement, or that one or more material changes to the operations or oil and gas facilities have been made without the express written consent of the city, the director may temporarily suspend the oil and gas permit and order all operations, strikeout there under, insert, permitted by the city under the oil and gas permit, to cease. In such event, the operator shall strike out immediately, cease all operations, insert, as soon as possible to do so in a safe manner, upon written notification by the director of the violation or identification of the material changes. Insert, "The city will not order cessation of any activity subject to the sole jurisdiction of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission."
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve the amendment.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve that amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried.
The next would be a motion to insert the words, quote, "and the city prevails in such action", end quote, before the words "operator shall pay" in Section 21-5266, Prince Four, Prince F, fourteen F.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve the amendment.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried.
And then the final one would be to amend, or to strike out Section Eight of Ordinance 2183, which is the effective date.
Mr. Madera?
Move to approve the amendment.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Takes care of all of the amendments. We can now, I'm open for a motion to approve Ordinance 2183 with said amendments on second reading. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve Ordinance 2183 as amended on second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Is there a way to, is this the point to add the 5.2 as far as the setbacks, I mean, the arsenal and the Bar Lake?
A motion to amend the ordinance would be appropriate.
Okay.
At this time, not passing judgment on the legality or wisdom.
Okay. A motion to amend the ordinance as written to include the performance standard under 5.6, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge in Bar Lake Park setback with the one mile on the outer banks, no surface or underground disturbance within one mile from the outermost boundaries of the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge in Bar Lake.
Is the motion maker acceptable to the amendment?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So I have to take this motion as it is first, Steve?
Yeah.
So I do have a motion to approve on second reading. Yes, sir.
He would have, if there's not a second, then the motion.
There's not a second.
Okay, if there's not a, if there's not a second to Mr. Douglas's motion, then it wouldn't carry, and then, okay. Just want to make sure, because there would be action on his motion before action on Mr. Madera's.
Okay. Now, so I got a motion for Mr. Madera.
On approval of the ordinance.
I don't have a second. Right? Mr. Teeter's the second.
Yes.
So I do have a second. So I ask for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
He gave an amendment. The amendment was struck down by the motion maker.
The, Mr. Madera wouldn't have the ability to strike that down here.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. I got to take a vote.
No.
Can there be an amendment?
Yes, there's, he can have, he can move to amend the primary motion on.
Okay, so Steve can make a new motion.
I just did.
Yes.
And he just did. So now is there a, is there a second to Mr. Douglas's motion?
Can you restate the motion?
Mr. Douglas, please restate the motion.
Yes, this is a motion for a setback, well, I'm sorry, to include in the ordinance the performance standard 5.6, Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge and Bar Lake Park setback. It says there is no, there shall be no surface or underground disturbance within one mile from the outermost boundaries of the Rocky Mountain Wildlife, sorry, Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge or Bar Lake State Park.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Currently, that is stated in the model extraction agreement, as you stated, as a means to begin negotiation.
Correct.
But there's nothing that is actually set out there, and this, in my understanding, would preempt state law?
No, the city cannot preempt state law in this regard.
Right.
Setbacks by courts have been found by, beyond that which is required by the state, have been found to be preempted. So local governments could not include that sort of regulation.
Okay. So as of today, November 19, 2018, we don't have the ability to fully enforce this if we were to pass this as part of our ordinance?
I would want to discuss some of the actions regarding this in executive session. I would recommend that, if council would be okay with that.
Let me see if I get a second to the motion.
Sure.
I'd want to go to executive session and hear your comments on that.
But at this point, there is a motion, as you mentioned.
There is a motion on the floor we have to take care of. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Huesman?
I'll second Councilman Douglas's motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Which we'll take as a motion to amend, the motion to amend that to include a prohibition on oil and gas development within a mile of Bar Lake and the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. If you'll give me one moment, Mayor Ford?
I will.
Thank you. If council wanted to go into executive session at this point, it would be a motion pursuant to Section 424b of the Open Meetings Law relating to the purpose of giving, receiving legal advice on legal question as to this proposed amendment.
All right. You all have heard the motion. Is there anybody willing to make that motion? Mr. Madera?
So moved.
Mr. Huesman?
Second to motion to go into executive session.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purposes stated by our attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We will be in executive session. (inaudible) For the record, ordinance 2183 is approved unanimously on second reading. Or, I'm sorry, not unanimously, it was a six to two vote on second reading. All right, that brings us to our presentation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we do have a presentation. I want to introduce the extraction oil and gas, they're going to do an introduction and overview. So whoever's making that presentation, please come forward and give us your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to make a brief introduction. My name is Dominic Martinelli. I am a staff member with Community Development, City of Commerce City. Through staff's monthly updates on oil and gas, the council requested to hear from Extraction Oil and Gas, an operator who's filed multiple permits with the state to drill in Commerce City. Extraction here is present tonight to provide a brief introduction to council in response As a reminder, this was discussed during the recent telephone town hall meeting, but a community meeting is going to be scheduled on December 6th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Bison Ridge Recreation Center regarding Extraction's planned activities. More opportunity for specific questions and details regarding Extraction and any concerns that you may have in addition to that will be available from Extraction at that event, as well as the city.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Jacobson at 370 Seventeenth Street in Denver, Colorado, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Extraction Oil and Gas. I'm joined tonight by Spencer Crouch, Extraction's project manager in Commerce City, as well as a few others who will help me take you through this presentation and any follow-up questions. Extraction is a Denver-based company focused entirely on development in Colorado. Today, Extraction is the third-largest oil and gas company in Colorado, and we are known for engaging with communities to create best-in-class developments. Our employees live in many of the areas where we operate, including Commerce City. We strive to be the operator of choice on the front range, and we demonstrate this commitment through our collaborative approach to safe and responsible energy development. And our company is known for the innovations we've brought to Colorado, as well as our stakeholder engagement. Our innovations and best practices include multiple layers of operational safety and engineering designs that safeguard our operations and the environment. We have demonstrated this approach wherever we operate, such as Greeley and Windsor, and more recently in Broomfield, by working collaboratively with the local government to thoughtfully plan our development. Our goal here in Commerce City will be to safely and responsibly produce natural resources in a manner that is compatible with the community, minimizes impact, and is beneficial to Commerce City, Adams County, and all Colorado citizens. We are very pleased to have the opportunity to introduce ourselves and our proposed Commerce City development plan to you tonight and to answer any questions that mayor or council members might have. Extraction is a safety and environmental leader in Colorado. We are proud that our employees have worked over 1.2 million man-hours without any recordable or lost time incident. Earlier this year, Extraction was recognized by the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment, or CDPEHE, as a Gold Member of the Environmental Leadership Program. This award reflects the dedication Extraction has shown to bringing new technologies to operating in Colorado that help reduce our environmental impact, including our use of line-powered electric rigs, quiet completion fleets, proposed tankless development, and a host of additional best management practices, or BMPs. IES Trustwell, a third-party independent auditor, shown on this slide, that analyzes oil and gas facility designs, recently audited our well facility designs and gave Extraction the highest ranking ever awarded in the United States for reliability and safety. Additionally, Extraction was named Operator of the Year for the Rocky Mountain Region in 2018, and also received first-place recognition in the Rockies region for excellence in corporate and social responsibility. These achievements are evidence of our commitment to deliver best-in-class development in all areas where we operate. Extraction has always chosen to lead by example and create the solutions that matter that minimize impacts of traditional operations, and as a result, has made the Colorado oil and gas industry a better neighbor. Extraction is committed to not only meet, but often to exceed state and local standards in all facets of our business. Underlying our commitment to exceed regulatory standards, we already operate within what is perhaps the most robust regulatory framework in the nation. As you can see, there are multiple layers of regulations and standards that include federal laws and state regulations in consultation with local governments. In Colorado specifically, we are regulated by more than nine federal and state agencies and adhere to standards from multiple industry organizations. And each has an important role in ensuring that energy is developed safely and responsibly for all Coloradans. We work with these agencies and organizations throughout the entire lifecycle of oil and gas development, from initial planning to permitting and design through operations and eventually site reclamation. These agencies routinely inspect sites to ensure facilities are being operated in a way that is safe and consistent with all laws, regulations, and standards. Extraction's target is full compliance, as we take our license to operate very seriously. From our perspective, safe and responsible oil and gas development isn't limited to just the operations phase, it covers the entire lifecycle of oil and gas development. The key takeaway here is that at Extraction, we go above and beyond regulations that are already among the most robust in the nation. And at this point, I'd like to hand the presentation over to Spencer Crouch, our project manager, to go over the stages of development.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you to Mayor Ford and council members for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Before going through my prepared remarks, I'd like to state that-
Legal advice, thank you for bearing with us. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, which is to amend the Land Development Code to allow for a one-mile setback from Bar Lake and the perimeter of Bar Lake and the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge. With that said, I have a request or request to speak from Mr. Douglas, who is the motion maker. Mr. Douglas.
Counsel is seated. I just, going to point of discussion, I'm going to withdraw that motion and keep this in the modeling extraction agreement.
I have a withdrawal of the motion, but in order to allow for that motion to be withdrawn, I need to have consent from the entire council. If anybody objects to that withdrawal, now's the time to get my attention. Seeing no one, the motion is withdrawn. We do have another motion on the floor, which is Mr. Madera, seconded by Mr. Teeter, which was to approve on second reading, 2183, with the seven amendments that were stated and authorized earlier. The city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2183 and ordinance amending sections 21-3200, 21-3425, 21-3216, and 21-5266 of the Land Development Code of the City of Commerce City relating to the oil and gas permits and subsurface extraction requirements and related procedural matters.
Thank you. I ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2183 is approved unanimously on second reading. Oh, no, I'm sorry, not unanimously, it was a six to two vote on second reading. All right, that brings us to our presentation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we do have a presentation. I want to introduce the extraction, oil, and gas. They're going to do an introduction and overview. So whoever's making that presentation, please come forward and give us your presentation.
I'm going to make a brief introduction. My name is Dominic Martinelli. I am a staff member with Community Development, City of Commerce City. Through staff's monthly updates on oil and gas, the council requested to hear from Extraction Oil and Gas, an operator who's filed multiple permits with the state to drill in Commerce City. Extraction here is present tonight to provide a brief introduction to council in response to this request. As a reminder, this was discussed during the recent telephone town hall meeting, but a community meeting is going to be scheduled on December 6th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Bison Ridge Recreation Center regarding Extraction's planned activities. More opportunity for specific questions and details regarding Extraction and any concerns that you may have in addition to that will be available from Extraction at that event, as well as the city.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Jacobson at 370 Seventeenth Street in Denver, Colorado, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Extraction Oil and Gas. I'm joined tonight by Spencer Crouch, Extraction's project manager in Commerce City, as well as a few others who will help me take you through this presentation and any follow-up questions. Extraction is a Denver-based company focused entirely on development in Colorado. Today, Extraction is the third-largest oil and gas company in Colorado, and we are known for engaging with communities to create best-in-class developments. Our employees live in many of the areas where we operate, including Commerce City. We strive to be the operator of choice on the front range, and we demonstrate this commitment through our collaborative approach to safe and responsible energy development. And our company is known for the innovations we've brought to Colorado, as well as our stakeholder engagement. Our innovations and best practices include multiple layers of operational safety and engineering designs that safeguard our operations and the environment. We have demonstrated this approach wherever we operate, such as Greeley and Windsor, and more recently in Broomfield, by working collaboratively with the local government to thoughtfully plan our development. Our goal here in Commerce City will be to safely and responsibly produce natural resources in a manner that is compatible with the community, minimizes impact, and is beneficial to Commerce City, Adams County, and all Colorado citizens. We are very pleased to have the opportunity to introduce ourselves and our proposed Commerce City development plan to you tonight and to answer any questions that Mayor or council members might have. Extraction is a safety and environmental leader in Colorado. We are proud that our employees have worked over 1.2 million man-hours without any recordable or lost-time incident. Earlier this year, Extraction was recognized by the Colorado Department of Public Health in the Environment, or CDPE, as a Gold Member of the Environmental Leadership Program. This award reflects the dedication Extraction has shown to bringing new technologies to operating in Colorado that help reduce our environmental impact, including our use of line-powered electric rigs, quiet completion fleets, proposed tankless development, and a host of additional best management practices, or BMPs. IES Trustwell, a third-party independent auditor, shown on this slide, that analyzes oil and gas facility designs, recently audited our well facility designs and gave Extraction the highest ranking ever awarded in the United States for reliability and safety. Additionally, Extraction was named Operator of the Year for the Rocky Mountain region in 2018, and also received first-place recognition in the Rockies region for excellence in corporate and social responsibility. These achievements are evidence of our commitment to deliver best-in-class development in all areas where we operate. Extraction has always chosen to lead by example and create the solutions that matter that minimize impacts of traditional operations, and as a result, has made the Colorado oil and gas industry a better neighbor. Extraction is committed to not only meet, but often to exceed state and local standards in all facets of our business. Underlying our commitment to exceed regulatory standards, we already operate within what is perhaps the most robust regulatory framework in the nation. As you can see, there are multiple layers of regulations and standards that include federal laws and state regulations in consultation with local governments. In Colorado specifically, we are regulated by more than nine federal and state agencies and adhere to standards from multiple industry organizations. And each has an important role in ensuring that energy is developed safely and responsibly for all Coloradans. We work with these agencies and organizations throughout the entire lifecycle of oil and gas development, from initial planning to permitting and design through operations and eventually site reclamation. These agencies routinely inspect sites to ensure facilities are being operated in a way that is safe and consistent with all laws, regulations, and standards. Extraction's target is full compliance, as we take our license to operate very seriously. From our perspective, safe and responsible oil and gas development isn't limited to just the operations phase. It covers the entire lifecycle of oil and gas development. The key takeaway here is that at Extraction, we go above and beyond regulations that are already among the most robust in the nation. And at this point, I'd like to hand the presentation over to Spencer Crouch, our project manager, to go over the stages of development.
Spencer. Thank you, Eric, and thank you to Mayor Ford and council members for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Before going through my prepared remarks, I'd like to state that we're not planning on setting foot or putting any wells on Rocky Mountain National Arsenal or beneath it. We are not going to cross that imaginary line into the arsenal. I'm aware that some of you have questions about what energy development will be like in Commerce City and how it might affect you and your neighbors. Tonight, we want to answer those questions by addressing various aspects of our plan. The next few slides will focus on how we are designing our Commerce City development plan to minimize the overall energy development footprint, the industry-leading best practices we are proposing to use, and how the multiple layers of safety and environmental protection we have in place are designed to ensure exceptional, safe, and reliable operations. In fact, we are bringing together multiple examples of proven technology into a single design that minimizes inconveniences and eliminates impacts. To highlight how Extraction is committed to exceeding regulations at every stage of development, this slide shows what the COGCC, or Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, standards are and what Extraction is offering to do in Commerce City, which includes a proposal that significantly exceeds those standards. First, and potentially most important to some of your residents, is well pad location. Through extensive collaboration with city staff, landowners, housing developers, Extraction is proud to say that our current development planning has resulted in an average setback of over 2,500 feet from any house to one of our wells, which is more than five times the state standard of 500 feet. In fact, several proposed well locations have no residential development whatsoever within a mile. While we cannot always achieve such distances from structures to gain needed access to subsurface minerals, in this case, through collaboration with city staff and area landowners, we are proud to have achieved these setback distances thus far in our Commerce City planning. During our operations, we will install 30-foot sound walls around our sites to help mitigate both light and noise impacts. As we move into the drilling phase, the most important aspect of drilling a well is being certain that the well is designed, constructed, and drilled properly. While drilling, we install multiple layers of steel and cement, and we test our wells throughout the drilling and completions phase to ensure proper structural integrity. It takes us approximately four to 10 days to drill a horizontal well, depending on the length. Despite no regulatory requirement to do so, we are working to power our drilling rigs in Commerce City on electric line power to eliminate source emissions and further reduce noise. This same electric line power will also be used to run our production facilities for the life of our wells, even further reducing noise and air emissions. Once we are finished drilling, we will complete our wells, meaning we will stimulate the wells with a mixture of mostly sand and water to produce the energy resources. To do this, Extraction plans utilize a quiet completion fleet, which completely encloses pump engines and either even further reduces the noise. Extraction is actually a leader in bringing this technology to the front range. Again, when utilizing the quiet completion technology that we helped innovate, not even earplugs are required, and you're able to have a conversation just like we're having right now. In addition to the BMPs and technologies we will be implementing for our drilling and completion operations, we are also discussing the possibility of installing pipelines to transport produced oil, water, and natural gas. If we are allowed to install pipelines in Commerce City and are able to secure right away, literally millions of truck miles will be removed from Colorado roads over the life of our development. Pipelines allow for a closed-loop system, which even further eliminates planned air emissions altogether. Elsewhere in our development planning, we have been told by state regulators that our closed-loop pipeline systems are so airtight that they will not even need an air permit. The pipeline infrastructure planning assumes we're able to secure a necessary right away, excuse me. All of our production facilities will be remotely monitored by automated systems and onsite field personnel 24/7. The facilities will also be equipped with pre-programmed automatic shutdown capabilities that can shut in the wells immediately. Throughout the life of the well, we will use infrared cameras to inspect all connections of the closed-loop system to ensure even the tiniest of leaks are mitigated, even those that may not be seen, heard, or smelled by human senses. Extraction has completed thousands of these inspections to date across our operations. And once our wells are finished producing, we will plug those wells, remove the facilities, and fully restore the surface to its original condition. As a Colorado resident, I value clean water as much as every person here. We believe everyone deserves clean water. We are focused on protecting both surface and underground freshwater sources. We do this in part by installing both surface, we do this in part by installing multiple layers of surface and underground barriers to contain all fluids on the site and within the wellbore. Per our well design and state regulations, the wells we are planning in Commerce City will have three layers of pipe, also known as casing, cemented in place, each providing a redundant layer of groundwater protection. Additionally, per regulations, we perform baseline water testing on all wells within a half-mile of our operations before and after the completion process to ensure water quality. As an additional measure of certainty, we pressure-test our wells to ensure integrity. All these steps ensure that nothing travels into or out of our wellbores and protects freshwater aquifers located at shallow depths of 400 to 1,000 feet. For context, our target oil-bearing zone is at a depth greater than 7,000 feet below the surface. The laws of physics do a great job of protecting groundwater from upward migration of oil and gas, with thousands of feet of impervious bedrock between the oil and gas formations and any freshwater zones. During the completions phase, we constantly monitor wellbore pressures, so we know that all activity is occurring in the proper subsurface areas. Tens of thousands of wells have been drilled safely in Colorado, and the measures used to safeguard our water resources are proven, monitored, and closely regulated by the COGCC. The next few slides will focus on how we designed our proposed Commerce City development plan to minimize the overall development footprint. The map on this slide shows the pad locations in bright green that we currently have pending with the COGCC. As I mentioned before, through extensive collaboration with city staff, landowners, and housing developers, we have identified the six pad locations shown on this map that enable us to most thoughtfully produce the energy resources we all use each day. We will continue to incorporate feedback from residents and the city, and we may continue to adjust these locations to better suit everyone's needs. Currently, there is only one house within 1,000 feet of any well on any of these six pads, and that is a function of the thoughtful approach we put into our site assessment. When we initially approached this project, we looked at it from the perspective of how this development can have as minimal an impact as possible on the community. As a part of the Commerce City regulatory process, each of these pad locations will have a dedicated neighborhood meeting for residents who live within a certain radius of the pad. Moving to the next slide, let me summarize the technologies that Extraction is offering to bring to Commerce City to minimize impacts of energy development. We will be utilizing electric rig power for our drilling rigs and equipment to help reduce noise and air emissions. We will likely be proposing a pipeline to transport our oil, natural gas, and water so that we can remove tanks from our facilities and haul trucks from the road, further reducing the visual and air impacts on the community. Our pad sites will be equipped with cutting-edge emission reduction units capable of eliminating any emissions with over 99% efficiency. Our quiet completion fleet will be utilized on sensitive pads. The noise level at 500 feet from the quiet fleet is frequently less than that of ambient noise. This has been groundbreaking for our industry. And each pad will be equipped with custom-built polymer sound walls, which are designed to mitigate both noise and visual impacts to the surrounding area. Most of these mitigations are not required by regulations, but Extraction is committed to providing them. We want to be good neighbors to Commerce City, and we're committed to doing what's right. I also want to talk about two of the most significant benefits to the community from our development: tax revenue and the removal of vertical wells. If we are able to fully execute our development plan, at current commodity prices, we estimate that more than $350 million in ad valorem and sales tax would be generated directly as a result of our operations. To highlight where this money will go, we've lumped it into three categories. First, roughly $34 million will go directly to Commerce City and local infrastructure projects. Second, approximately $137 million will go directly to education and school districts, local and statewide. And finally, we estimate that more than $180 million will go to Adams County, fire departments, libraries, and other local districts. Another major benefit of our development in Commerce City is the removal of existing vertical wells and facilities that Extraction currently operates in and around the city. That includes the removal of around 40 existing vertical wells and over 60 tanks marked by the green marks on the right map, enabling us to reclaim approximately 25 acres and return them to the community. Although these wells have been around for decades, many of them are located in areas now ripe for further community development. Removing these wells could help the reunion and Buffalo Run neighborhoods continue to expand. In fact, if you compare our proposed surface locations and the locations of these existing wells on the map, I can confidently say that many Commerce City houses will actually be further away from an active oil and gas well when we're done than they are right With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Eric to conclude our presentation by highlighting our safety program and summarizing our best-in-class development plan.
Thank you, Spencer. We live in the communities where we operate, so we hold ourselves to the highest possible standards, and our company's track record demonstrates our commitment with over 1.2 million man-hours worked without an employee recordable or lost-time incident. We are experienced in developing multi-well sites and have never had an uncontrolled well issue in our company's history. We are one of the safest, most innovative, and responsible operators in Colorado, and I'm here to say tonight that we will do this the right way in Commerce City. Our safety record is incredibly strong, and our innovations are best-in-class. We care about the future of Commerce City, and we will continue to engage in a comprehensive planning process to help this community plan for responsible oil and gas development. Our goal is to protect your way of life, and this outstanding project design we're proposing accomplishes exactly that. The results from our best-in-class Commerce City development proposal are simple: we will operate safely while protecting the environment, we will improve the aesthetics of your neighborhoods, and allow for continued development by removing existing vertical wells. We will protect the air and water in your community by using advanced technology and design, and we will deliver an estimated $350 million in tax revenue to this city and our state as a result of this project. This is our commitment to you. We will safely and efficiently produce these natural resources that we all use each day in a manner that improves this community, minimizes impact, and is beneficial to residents and citizens of Commerce City. Thank you all for allowing us your time this evening to present.
Thank you. Counsel, have any comments for the presenters at this time? Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you. I know a lot of our residents were wanting to make sure that the operators came forward and were trying to lay out their plan. Some may not agree with your plan, some may. However, I want to at least congratulate you for coming in, stepping up, and giving a plan so that our residents can see what's happening, and then they'll have the opportunity at the rec center to engage more deeply. So, thank you for coming in. Councilwoman Frank.
You talked about the radius for the city meetings that you would hold for each pad. What is that radius?
I believe in discussions with city staff, we're talking up to a half-mile.
That's the current requirement in the Land Development Code for neighborhood meetings for oil and gas sites.
Okay. And then, what would your timeline be to remove the legacy vertical wells?
Typically, we'll remove those within six months of our new wells being on production.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Some questions here, you know, our growth boundary goes east and north of DIA. We're one of the fastest-growing cities in Colorado with the average of two families of four moving in every day. Our infrastructure needs are about $1 billion, and what you're saying, over a lifetime, you contribute $34 million towards our economy, our, towards taxes, and that doesn't come close to what we need and what this would do to our environment. I'm not saying that, also saying, no, I'm sorry, not also saying that the homes that are not here, present today, and where you are doing, what impact that's going to have on those future homes coming in and being built. We just spend a lot of money improving roads that were greatly needed for years. We just got modelings from the state for Highway 2 for expansion. We have a lot of growth to go, and we also, it's very expensive now to live in Colorado. And for folks moving in, you know, they just can't pick up and leave. And I know you said, "Industry lives here." Well, when this goes, when you guys go someplace else, that industry goes too. Those folks don't stay here. I know that because I have several neighbors that have worked in different oil, for different oil companies. Once those projects move, they move, so they're not a staple in the community. Right, I appreciate you coming in and talking, but it's more of a, like selling a car. You know, when you go buy a car anymore, they always ask you, "What can you afford?" based on what you make. Well, our health and safety and welfare is not for sale, and as much as, as we guys want to come here, it makes it really hard to consider this, and I was sent by the pre- the permissions from the state and all that. And things are changing. I mean, when it comes to energy production, fossil fuel is declining. The price of gas has gone down. This is the holidays, the price should be going up. Normally around the holidays, gas prices go up, but they've been going down. And so, and I know the benefits, but it's the fact that if we're going to be oil-independent, let's throttle that to make sure when we do extract, we do it for the benefit of what the United States need, not what other countries need. I know that's how you guys make your money. So I know as far as the price and all, there is a falling adjustment. You talk about, it takes two to six days to drill a well. I know there was a meeting you guys had back in August with some folks in Buffalo Mesa. I've sent some information, I just saw it today, and they were concerned on that presentation that was given to them. We have folks here who live in the city who have oil and gas leases. I mean, they have their minerals, and a lot of them don't want to, want to lease, but based on the state's law, it's the forced pooling. And so, some say, "Hey, go ahead and take it," because the amount of money that you would get for their agreement, it's, ends up because of the way production and all the way around, they're not going to receive a whole lot of money. At first, some people thought they were going to be like the Beverly Hillbillies and strike it rich, but that's not, that's not likely going to happen. So, you just listening to your presentation almost sounds like you have a deal that was already stricken. Instead of coming in saying, "Hey, this is who we are," based on what we present, but it's more like you're, have already sold some. I'm not sold on this, and it's going to be a hard, a hard decision, a hard fight. And then you also have to welcome in the community too, as far as really hearing what they have to say. Because if you look at it, that ballot measure 112 was 5.2% from being the other way. That's significant. And the fact that there's more people voted yes than for the other, than for the other governor, this is a lot too. So, and the fact that the House and Senate and government, I'm sorry, the, our governor, not saying how he's going to rule on this, but also was put out there that Attorney General Phil Wiser said that if the Martinez case, there's no decision made on that, that he would look at repealing that, that was brought forward. So, we have long ways to go, and I would hope that you guys take things consideration as this is a living document, so if things do come up, you're sensitive to what is going on, present day and for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Madera.
Yeah, so my questions are just, we had some citizens up here earlier that were asking about the liquidity and the business, and I see that you guys, you know, net borrowings over repayments is ballpark of 400 million, but can you just explain to us a little bit about the company, how you guys are doing financially, and how you can assure us that you're going to be in business, going to be strong, and, you know, be around the community to reclaim the land to its original state when you guys are gone and the wells are produced, all they're going to produce?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Madera. As far as the response to the two people who commented, who were residents of Commerce City, I think one of them did mention the financial- City, I think one of them did mention the financial piece of it that you're rightly asking about. We're very strong, we're in a very strong financial situation. We've committed to our analysts publicly that we intend to be cash flow positive in the fourth quarter of this year, and we're striving to that end. We are now, we believe, I believe we are third or fourth-largest producer in the state of Colorado, so we generate a substantial amount of cash from that production. And our long-term goals are very robust and solvent. We're the third-largest acreage holder in the state of Colorado and have more approved state permits than any operator currently in the state. So, we're in a great position. We're working hard to be cash flow positive hereafter as a company. That's our stated goal to analysts publicly, which is a great position to be in for a company that's only two years old in the public eye and only five to six years old in total. So, we're really proud of our acreage position, our well performance, our financial performance. We will be working hard to paying down any debt, like our debt, like any company will, and get into a nice net debt-to-EBITDA ratio that we've stated to the street. As far as our ability to perform what we say, our intention in the proposal tonight would be to reach agreement with Commerce City on an operator agreement, and that agreement, we're either able to produce and deliver to that agreement or we're not. And if our company is not in a financial position, then we don't drill wells, and therefore, we just would stop the operator agreement there. We have no intention to do that. We like the rock under Commerce City. We love our plan, obviously up for your consideration of proposal, and the state does have financial assurance mechanisms to ensure that we're able to remediate the wells at the end of their life. So, there's state laws that cover that, that require us a certain amount of bonding and insurance, and on top of that, our company is in great financial situation. We make super wells, and we're really pleased to have fantastic reservoir rock that makes great wells, and we'll look forward to, our hope is again, to look forward to executing an operator agreement with Commerce City, a best-in-class agreement, that we will have the full financial authority to execute. One other thing I failed to mention is we already do have funding for pipelines, should you all approve pipelines and infrastructure. We already have secured funding that's nonrecourse to our company to install pipelines and infrastructure. So, that is in place, that vehicle is in place and secured.
And as far as the pipeline, you know, you mentioned earlier that you're leading the company technology-wise. We had COGA's attorney here earlier also speaking about injection wells, and you have to understand our history, we're a little bit wary about injection wells and, you know, trusting having pollutants injected back into the ground because we did have and still have contaminated plumes of groundwater as a result of this. So, does the extraction currently have or any alternatives to injection wells? And if they do, what is it?
We currently do dispose of our water through injection wells. We do not have any intention of drilling nor asking any of our third-party providers to drill injection wells in Commerce City. There are available technologies out there. They are not as economically feasible and prudent to recycle the water, and even if, even in the cases where they are, only a smaller volume of the water that's returned from the wells can be recycled with the current technology and need. The thing about the Niobrara and Codell formations that we'll be drilling and completing here under Commerce City is of the water that we pump into the formations, only about 30% of it is returned in the lifetime of the well. So, 70% of the water stays in the reservoir, the oil and gas-producing reservoir. Only 30% of it's returned that is currently injected into disposal wells largely in Weld County under state rules and regulations in a very safe practice and manner.
So, those injection wells would not be in the city?
We don't have any intention to put injection wells in the city nor ask any third-party providers to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Guardiola.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. How many accidents or issues have occurred at any of your wells or around your wells in the last two years?
Thank you, Councilmember Guardiola. I guess the definition of accident or incident is fairly broad, but as far as major incidents, we've had one major fire in our Windsor block, the Stromberger event, that happened on December 22nd of 2017. We have been very, very transparent about that incident. We filed a investigation report with the State Colorado Oil and Gas Commission. We have conducted a thorough investigation, and we've also followed up with the Broomfield residents and with a letter to the city and county of Broomfield at their request describing all of the different measures that we've taken to prevent that incident from happening again, and I'm proud to report that it has not happened again. We had about 15 different items that we labeled, that we detailed to the state and to the local community on what we've done to address that event. I'm also, I also think it's important to note in our communications with the state and local community that that event, even though we do consider it a significant incident that we will work tirelessly to prevent from happening again, was fully contained to the site. It was extinguished in a matter of hours. The public was not impacted by that event, and there was one individual out of 20 on location that was injured, and that person has since fully recovered.
Thank you. And then, do you have a public evacuation plan that people could see? The site Oriole, and they're all important, but that's close to Bison Ridge, Trembury. What would be that evacuation plan?
Thank you, yes. Each location will have an emergency response plan that would include, in cooperation with local agencies, fire departments namely, who we work with extensively across the front range, all measures and components of an emergency response plan, including the response itself and any sort of evacuation that might be necessary. I would mention that, under the plan that we're proposing to you all, that the risks have been reduced dramatically if, in fact, we do install pipelines, as we may be able to eliminate tanks and millions of truck miles off the road, which substantially reduce the risk of any incident from happening.
Are these plans public, so the public can know if something happens, this is the protocol?
Yes, they would be public and available through the fire department.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you for coming tonight, everybody on both sides. It's been a long night. I know this is an ever-changing industry. Do you have any tangible examples of any future advanced safety technology that's out there that your company currently doesn't use, that you're looking for in the future that would keep the communities even more safe?
I think, Councilmember Davis, that we have implemented a large number of safety measures that we're just in the process of implementing, including pipelines, tankless facilities, extremely robust automated safety protective systems that are always evolving. I don't know of any specific examples right now on safety protective systems, but those are evolving all the time. We remote-monitor our facilities, and we have computer programmable logic computers that govern the safety and functionality of all of our sites. In combination with what we're proposing here in Commerce City, I think in and of itself is quite an advancement, and it's very similar to what we propose or what we actually are enacting in Broomfield, which is design out the hazards. If we don't have tanks, then the hazard of tanks doesn't exist. If we don't have trucks to haul product out of those tanks, i.e. with pipelines, then the hazard of truck miles and trucks on the road doesn't exist. So, our number-one approach in extraction is multiple layers of safety, but first and foremost, even before that, is to design out the hazard. So, design out the hazard from tanks, design out the hazard from trucks, use electric-driven motors in our production as well as our drilling, so that we do not have any, you know, diesel or gas engines on location. All of those sorts of things in combination are dramatic risk reductions and significant safety advancements in our industry compared to the norm in Colorado. So, I don't have any specific things that hit me as examples of future, but the combination of what we are bringing and proposing here to Commerce City, I think in combination is quite significant and ground-making.
On your larger sites, do you have any kind of firefighting equipment that's there besides just extinguishers? And if so, what kind do you have?
So, in our Commerce City development proposal, along with Broomfield, there are some larger central locations that are very rurally located, and that's where all of the product would go to. So, somewhere east of here for Commerce City is where all of these wells and tankless facilities would route to. Those are extremely well-designed and robust, and they do have some, not necessarily firefighting equipment, but they do have foam, I guess they do have foam on location, and they have designed locations where the fire department could connect into the different tanks or vessels with the foam already in the design. So, the design accommodates a quick connect for the local fire departments with foam. But again, these are the larger facilities that are located in a more rural location well away from Commerce City. In Commerce City itself, we would not have any firefighting equipment beyond extinguishers, but then again, the amount of equipment here would be extremely minimal should you all accept our proposal for pipelines and approve the pipeline route. We would remove nearly all of the equipment associated with normal oil and gas locations, so therefore, again, the risk is greatly reduced and the need for such equipment nearly goes away. However, on those pads, we would have, just to Councilmember Guardiola's earlier comment and question, we would certainly have emergency response procedures that we develop in cooperation with the local fire department and that they would have the ability to come in, address any sort of incident that might happen, even as remote as it would be with our tankless facilities and our safety design systems.
Okay, so at your locations, your first response for any fire is the local fire departments?
It is. Our first response would be to remotely shut in and isolate any sort of hazards. And we can do that because of all of the technology, valving, and equipment on our location. So, each well could be shut in either automatically by the safety detection systems or remotely from our operators at the central facility. So, our first line of defense is to shut in anything. Our first line of defense, actually, is to shut in before anything happens, and that's why the safety systems monitor events that might lead to problems and shut in very preemptively. Should an event happen, we have detectors on locations that shut in also, and then further from that, if the very rare, but worst-case were to occur, we not only have the local fire department, but we also have in the DJ Basin proper, in and around the Denver-Julesburg Basin, a permanent wild well-control facility, a wild well-control presence, and they are known well-control companies. Wild Well Control Boots and Coats you might have heard of?
Yes.
We have those either in Basin or in Casper, Wyoming, and we have contracts with both those companies should the worst happen in a very, very rare scenario.
If I could add, if I could add a few more comments to that?
Yes, sir.
We've met with Brighton Fire, who is the jurisdiction for most of our pads. We've also met with South Adams County Fire, describing our plans to them, describing what we're doing. When we talk about going above and beyond regulations, one of the things we've discussed with city staff multiple times is ensuring that, in addition to the tactical response plan we'll provide for each pad, which has the evacuation radius and notification list, also notifying the fire department anytime we go to conduct operations on a well, so that they're aware ahead of time what we're doing and where we're going to be doing it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Huesman.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start with the slide concerning the financial impact to our city and community. You say an estimated $351 million in local taxes over the life of the project. What is considered to be the life of the project?
30 years.
30 years. So, we're actually looking at approximately $1.01 million to the city for a year?
One point of clarification, if I might. About 80% of that revenue would be received in the first five to six years of after-development. The way the wells produce, much higher in early life, and then they decline and lower in later life. So, somewhere like 80% of that $350 million total, 34 million of which goes to Commerce City, would be received as revenue in the first five to six years following production.
Sure, but I don't think that looks as attractive, knowing that's over 30 years. One of the big asterisk up there, when you go to the bottom, it says, "Tax revenue estimates subject to commodity prices, well performance, and development plan." Given the uncertainty in commodity prices back in 2009, whenever we saw unleaded gasoline down around $1.29 a gallon, and oil prices were at about $28 a barrel versus the current price of it now, that figure there, pretty much a wag?
It's based on what's called the NYMEX strip. The commodity traders in New York forecast based on their trading of commodity futures, what the price might be, and so that's based on the current price plus the forward-looking strip, which is about roughly $60 a barrel, pretty much a midpoint of where we've seen oil in the last probably 10 or 20 years. So, yes, absolutely, it could go down to 40, it could go up to 80 or 90, in which case, that revenue estimate goes up.
So, the highlight there of well performance, recently, back late spring, early summer, actually, according to the city, it would still be spring, you guys removed a well at 96 and Tower. Why was that well removed?
Are you talking about a vertical well that we plugged and abandoned?
Yes.
I can't speak to that well individually. I think frequently, wells reach the end of their productive life and are no longer economic to maintain. I think that's what happened with that well, it was no longer producing positive cash flow, so we decided to plug and abandon it and reclaim that location.
Excuse me. One thing I might add that gives a possibility, like Spencer, I'm not familiar with that exact well, but we have done some horizontal drilling in and around Commerce City, and so that well may have been part of a plug-and-removal as part of our new development around the exterior of Commerce City. I'm not sure about that either.
Okay. So, I guess the big question that hasn't been asked yet, and I'm shocked, is why here? Why in Commerce City do you feel that you need to do this? Whenever there's acres and acres and hectacres of land outside of residential areas, why do you feel you need to encroach upon houses in the manner in which you're proposing?
I might, if I could start by clarifying that our average setback is 2,500 feet in our current plan, about five times the existing state standard from residences in Commerce City. I think there's one house within 1,000 feet at the current proposal, but it's still well outside the 500-foot state standard. So, that's where our development program sits in Commerce City at the moment, and it just so happens, this is where great reservoir rock lies. Not all reservoir rock is created equal. We have leasehold positions that we secured in the last five or six years in our company, making arrangements with mineral owners who own minerals underneath Commerce City, and we've leased their minerals from them. And so, therefore, we would like to develop our mineral leasehold underneath Commerce City in a manner that's very compatible and friendly with the community, as well as provide tax revenue to the community and the state. But bottom line is, our leasehold is here, it's great reservoir rock, and we know that we can do this safely and responsibly in the community of Commerce City.
So, if you know that it's so great, then why are you still putting a big asterisk up there saying it's all based on well performance? You should be guaranteeing me that this is worth us doing this for $1 million a year.
We, $1 million a year to Commerce City, $350 million total over the life of the wells, the vast majority of that in the first five years, to schools and fire departments and others, just to clarify the slide. Our well performance, we believe, from the reservoir properties is absolutely solid. We have well performance outside of Commerce City, just outside, that's extremely robust. But until we actually drill and frac here, we don't know precisely what the wells will do, but we do know that they're going to be very solid and robust. Just how much so is yet to be determined until we actually drill and complete those.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Or the site behind Sonic that was drilled back in 2011, and extraction wasn't the company that did the drilling, right?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. We were not in existence in 2011.
Okay. Well, that area was fracked, and it was ended up being a low-producing well, and they were going to go back in to refract, that was in Gospomys, between $4 to $7 million to do that, and they decided not to do it because it wasn't worth it because of the volume was not sufficient. And you're saying the rock there is a great-pressure rock, but it's already been tested, and the results have been very poor. So, have you looked up that history prior to... So have you looked up that history prior to trying to get a permit here in Commerce City?
I'll defer to Spencer on some of the specifics. I don't know the particular well you're referencing, sir. But I would say is that based on the petrophysic and geologic properties of the Niobrara and Codell formations underneath Commerce City, we have extremely strong evidence from all, from the five or 600 other wells we've drilled and the several thousand wells that other operators have drilled in very, very comparable geologic and reservoir conditions, that in a horizontal well development in 2019, this will be a good place to drill. I can't speak to wells that are 2011 and before, and I don't, apologies, I don't know exactly that well. Oftentimes, vertical wells that were marginally economic back in the day in the Niobrara and Codell are extremely robust and economic in the multi-stage, in the horizontal drilling, multi-stage fracking world as we've seen repeatedly over our acreage position. And from the wells we've drilled immediately adjacent to Commerce City, that same holds true. They're fantastic wells so far.
Okay.
And Spencer, if you had anything to add, please do so.
Yeah. There's dozens of decades-old wells within Commerce City, old vertical wells. Some were productive, then were put on production and produced for years. A number were deemed uneconomic. There's multiple reservoirs in the earth that have been targeted over the decades. A number of sandstones and more recently the Niobrara and Codell formations. So it's difficult to say without knowing an individual well, what, what zone it was targeting or why it was or was not economic. The well control we do have within about two or three miles of Commerce City gets us very excited. There's been great well results just to the north, a few miles, some operated by extraction, some operated by other operators. I put that bullet point there because oil and gas development like this is inherently uncertain with well performance. You never know exactly what you're going to get. And so we don't want to be guaranteeing a precise number on there when it's subject to what the earth gives us.
Okay. Yeah, because there's been, we also have stripper wells here, which we don't get any, as far as any revenue from those. There's no severance tax. Most of the wells that you guys go after are stripper wells because there's no sharing of those as far as paying out severance tax. And then as far as Niobrara, the, the residential area is only 2% of the shell. So I, again, why come, why come to your residential area when you got 98% that you can go and do the fracking and collect, and collect those minerals? Why harm residents if that's only 2% of the makeup of that rock? Really, what's the, what's the drive here?
Apologies, I'm, I'm not tracking with the 2% number. Would you mind repeating the, the 2% that you're calculating?
The Niobrara shell, the areas that you guys want to go into, as far as the residential, is only 2% of the shell. There's 98% other areas that you don't have to come, have approachment into residential communities to obtain those minerals. Why 100%?
Well, if I'm understanding the question, we don't hold leases over all of the other 98% of the rock. We have 330,000 acres in the state of Colorado, so we're only able to develop where we have leasehold. And like any enterprise, we prefer and seek to do our best economic projects first and foremost. And Commerce City, based on previous well results, well results around the area and our knowledge of the geology and petrophysics here, are really high-quality great wells. So we, just like any other, just like a, a car salesman would want to sell cars with the highest margin, we want to drill wells with the best rock. And it just so happens that those are in Commerce City. And one point of clarification that I would, would like to make is you, you, you suggested that we come in here and harm the residents. We will not harm the residents of Commerce City. We, we have a very safe and reputable approach and we are committed to do a best-in-class, safe and responsible development plan as, as we've committed to you here tonight and as we've committed and proven successfully in other communities.
Now, you just stated that, based on history, but I just gave you a history lesson of the oil well that was drilled in 2011. And you state you're not, you weren't familiar with that. So for, for, for you to say that you study your history, and that proves to me you haven't. When I'm talking about impact on, I'm talking about the impact of residential. We, in this area here, our water comes from alluvial wells. And you could, you could accidentally affect our water, our water source. That's all we have.
In our presentation, we mentioned the multiple layers of protection for safeguarding water that has been proven, over 20,000 vertical wells and several thousand horizontal wells in the state of Colorado, with no widespread or systemic contamination of water whatsoever. And the same can be said on a nationwide basis, as evidenced by Ms. Lisa Jackson, who is the administrator of the EPA under President Barack Obama. There is no widespread or sustained groundwater contamination form drilling or hydraulic fracturing in the United States, period. Furthermore, there have been 23 groundwater studies done by reputable institutions, Colorado State among them, all of which have said there is no widespread or systemic contamination of groundwater whatsoever caused by our, our operations. So I would contend that we will safeguard the water and we have proven to do so repeatedly, as has the industry, not only in the state of Colorado, an extremely well-regulated state, but also nationwide.
Okay. I know there's been several incidents, so it's not, it's not a perfect system. There's been incidents where, where water sources have been affected. So it's not a guarantee that for you to come in, that won't happen. And if it does happen, what's the mitigation factor? What are you willing to pay back to make, to make things right? I mean, we're talking multi-million dollar projects. They're looking at improving our water. And the other question being answered, where will you, where will you get your water when you, when you frac these sites?
The water source when we frac the sites, it comes from private sources that we've secured, a couple of different sources in and around Commerce City that we've secured successfully so far and made arrangements with, should we be successful in getting an operator agreement here.
Is one of those facilities or structures South Adams? Water?
I'm, I'm not at liberty at the moment to, to disclose for competitive reasons, but we do have very viable surface water sources, two different ones that we can use to, to complete our wells.
Okay. So if a resident went to that water source, not say, not you naming it, but if they went and asked South Adams, I think that they would have to declare who that is because it's, as far as the public water, I mean, that's, that's, that serves, that serves the community.
Sorry, these are private water sources that I neglected to say that, I believe. There, two, two of them are private water sources.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other council members' desires to comment or question the presentation. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to move on in our agenda.
Thank you all as well.
Thank you.
All right, we come to administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business the council wants to bring forward at this time? Mr. Douglas, do you have something?
No, that was previous, thank you.
Mr. Guardiola.
Yeah. With the recent State Board of Education decision and hearing for Adams 14, District School Board Adams 14, I passed around a letter that I'd like to see if we could get signed and sent to the State Board of Education. I'll read it out loud. It says, "Honorable Members of the Board, A quality education system is critical to achieving Commerce City's vision of a quality community for a lifetime. Our city council shares the Colorado State Board of Education's goal of ensuring all Adams 14 school district students have access to high-quality instruction and opportunities. As community leaders, we look forward to working in partnership with the state and school district to ensure all of our youth succeed. As the State Board of Education finalizes detailed requirements for an external management organization, city council would ask the board to consider the following. The external management organization, EMO, selection process should include a robust public engagement effort that includes parents, community, and business leaders, local government partners, and nonprofit organizations. The EMO selection process should be clearly identified timelines and outcomes to establish clear community expectations. The selection process should consider EMO's capacity and expertise to meet the unique needs of this district. The selection process should consider EMO's proven track record of success in similar environments. The selection process should consider the EMO's proposed plan for engaging diverse stakeholders and communicating progress, timetables, and outcomes. Thank you for your consideration. As residents, we join you and our neighbors in advocating for movement strategies that immediately support all our students." I'd like to motion to see if we could approve this and so Mayor Sean Ford can sign it and send it. Time is critical here. The State Board is meeting with Attorney General within the next two weeks and the plan should be planned out for 90 days.
All right. That's a motion. I'm looking for a second. All right, Mr. Huesman.
Seconding the motion, have you signed the letter from the city to the Board of Education concerning this issue?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, Councilwoman Frank.
So I put in front of everybody a memo regarding the Commerce City Civic Academy. This was first brought forward, I believe, around August. But at the time, Paula resigned and so we decided to put this on hold. But we're initiating the, a pilot program that'll be a seven-week civic academy. It will begin January 30th and run through March 13th. And the academy will meet from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Bison Ridge Recreation Center. And basically, it's an opportunity for residents to deepen their knowledge of Commerce City and our operations. So what I am asking is that the city council members each recommend two people to participate in this pilot program. We're limiting it to 20 people. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but otherwise, I would like to move forward with this.
So I'm taking that as a motion, Councilwoman Frank, to approve the civic academy. Looking for a second. Mr. Douglas?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the, the pilot program was previously approved by the city council. So I don't think any official action is necessary tonight.
Okay, so is there anybody that have any questions concerning the civic academy then? Mr. Douglas?
No question. I agree.
Mr. Guardiola?
I read that it's 18 and up, Nicole. Is there any reason? What if like a high school senior or junior would want to do it? Because, because it's some good material. I mean, the workshops are going to be very informative.
I think for the initial pilot program, we wanted to get feedback from 18 and older and then we could discuss changing the ages as we move forward. But this initial program is to get feedback on what we're discussing, the topics, you know, the length of it, how the entire structure is working. So I think it would be more beneficial at this point to have 18 and older.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, and this does not compete with the Commerce City Leadership Program? Just want everybody to know that.
He's asking if this program would compete with Commerce City Leadership?
No, no, I'm saying it doesn't.
It doesn't?
Yeah.
No, okay, yeah. He's, it doesn't, correct?
No.
Right. All right. Anything else? Look forward to seeing this startup, Nicole. All right, anyone else have administrative council business? Mr. Davis, is your light on? All right, just checking because it has hardly been on all night. I know you keep trying to push it and I don't want to pass up the opportunity if you have something you want. There it's on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have any administrative?
I would just like to remind everybody that December 7th, we're going to graduate, I believe, nine new police officers for Commerce City at the academy. And the chief is going to let us know with those graduation plans. It's on a Friday, I believe, and I, I believe we'll get some invites. So I would like to see some folks go. I'm certainly going to be there.
Good. All right. Seeing no other administrative council business. Staff doesn't have any, correct? Move on to reports. Acting City Manager.
Mr. McBroom sent out the city manager report earlier this week. There's comments there relative to new regulations on the Opportunity Zone. Bison Ridge is moving to its winter hours, starting November 26th. And tomorrow, the city is cosponsoring a day for students to come fill out their FASFA forms and a request from Councilman Guardiola. That's all I have.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing additional this evening.
I give my reports real quick. First and foremost, the Veterans Dinner that Rotary put together and, and had in conjunction with the city of Commerce City at Bison Ridge. Our Rotary Club wants to make sure that all of the council staff are thanked for participation in the Veterans Dinner. It was a great turnout. It was the first of many to come. And the folks at Bison Ridge couldn't have been any more pleasurable to be around and accommodating for the need. The food was great, the, everything, everything worked out just perfectly. And during that presentation, I did publicly, during the presentation, thank the city and the city council for partnering and allowing the opportunity to use that space. But I was very thankful for the opportunity to participate in a program like that, thanking our veterans in Commerce City. One person during that event came up and talked to me, and I do know that there is an event coming up at our memorial, for the Veterans Memorial. Someone had come up and talked to me and said that the stone, there's like a brick, stone, paver piece in the memorial for the different services. And the one for Coast Guard, they said someone has smashed with a sledgehammer or something and it's all fractured. And they were very adamant that we took effort to try to get that stone replaced so that it would be the way it should be. So if you could please look into that. But otherwise, great event. Then had Rotary again every week. We won't have Rotary this week. We're, our club's dark due to Thanksgiving. There was the Kids First Health Fair. I don't know who on council showed up to that, but Kids First Healthcare was at the Yellow Rose. And then we also had our last Telephone Town Hall of the Year, which I want to thank the residents for participating with and thank our staff for helping to put that together. But I'm going to leave my reports at that for now. And I want to wish all of our staff and our residents happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Guardiola?
Just going on what Mr. Smith said, tomorrow is a FASFA date in Commerce City. It starts 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. FASFA is the one indicator that if a student completes it, 99.9% will attend college. So it's a huge indicator of post-secondary, whether it's a certificate, two-year or four-year, something that we were really pushing in Commerce City. So if you know any students, we've been getting tons of phone calls and I want to thank the staff for helping set that up for short notice. But I think it's going to be hopefully an annual event that we could host here for Perryview, Adams City, Lester, and VPA.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the citizens of Commerce City for allowing me to go to Los Angeles for a year and meeting with National League of Cities. It was a great event, a lot of different sessions on, on the environment. I did go on a couple tours, mobile tours. One of them was a wastewater facility treatment plant and absolutely no smell. It serves LA, 4 million residents strong. And got to see some parks within the city. It was interesting to go see this park. They did a complete makeover, bringing a lot of environmental watershed shedding around the park. It used to be a bus terminal. And so being in the city of LA now, people have the opportunity to exercise. And so being the city of L.A., now people have the opportunity to exercise just because of the area they're at. So we saw a lot of people either walking on their path or running with their families, some in between their jobs, doing a break or so. But I thought that was really interesting. Very sad that when we were there, the fires happened in California. So I pray for those folks that lost their whole life, some who lost their life. And hopefully, California will move forward and find some solutions so these fires won't continue to keep reoccurring.
All right. Anyone else? Before I go to asking for a motion for the executive session, I want to thank the public for allowing a lot of the newer council members and some of, I guess, at least one of the more senior council members, the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities. It was very interesting to not go, but to sit here and watch some of the stuff that was posted on Facebook about participation that was happening. And to see the council engaging at the level they were, I'm proud that you guys utilized that to your benefit. Some things that I noticed right off the bat, Mr. Davis was going to the police department and talking to them about some of their best practices and engaging with them and efforts. I saw some posts, Mr. Hughesman talking about opportunity to develop specialty parks that would benefit handicapped or disabled residents in our community and that they're a draw for several communities away for people to utilize those type of facilities. Mr. Douglas being at Tesla, looking at how to improve emissions and new technology and things of that nature. So even though I wasn't there, it was very impressive to see the interaction of the council that was there and the participation. And I think it's important to note that because too often, people think that it's a junket and you just are on a trip to go out there to have a great time. But we also know that you're leaving your families and you're going out there to educate yourself and better yourself to be able to do the job that you were elected to do. And it was very apparent with what I was seeing that you were all very engaged. So thank you to the council for taking those things seriously. With that said, I'm open for a motion to go into an executive session. Mr. Madera?
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to C.R.S. twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses B and E, for the purpose of determining positions and instructing negotiators relative to a potential annexation agreement for the property south of one hundred and fourth Avenue and west of Highway eighty-five.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
I have a motion to second to go into executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion is carried. And we'll come out and close out the meeting after our executive session.